All right, I'm going to call to order the regular meeting at 6:03 PM. The forum has been met, so if we can have a roll call vote.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mr. Biedman.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagmire. Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
All right, I'm going to move to enter into closed session at 6:03 PM. We will discuss matters of that are listed in the agenda. Do you need a roll call vote for that as well?
We need a second.
Oh, can I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Biedman.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagmire.
Quick, he just walked in.
All right, we will resume in public session at 7:02 PM after the pending closed session. Previously, can I have a roll call?
Mr. Fabiano.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bettman.
Here.
Mr. Paxton.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Here.
All right, with no action out of a closed session, we will move forward to number four, the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, one public comment. All right, looks like we have one public comment. So Ms. Wiley, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you very much.
You need to push the button, I think.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, as someone that's been attending board members or board meetings for a long time, the transparency that has gone on recently with the meeting that they've been published very, very quickly, and I'm really happy that they're very thorough. I know we have a new secretary, so thank you very much for really putting effort into putting those out there because I think it's very important for people that can't attend the meetings and don't have time to sit and watch the meetings online to be able to do that. So thank you very much, and thank you to the board for signing them and getting them published. So I wanted to kind of just put that out there, something really good that X seems for doing. So thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless there's anyone else who would like to make a public comment. We will move forward to number six, revision and adoption of the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt.
Like to move item 10, please.
Okay, again, let's stop and have some explanation. Mr. Troy, why would you like to move number 10?
There's nothing on there for one, and number two, stating that it's going to be new business is a way around the Open Meetings Act and providing information to the public so there's true transparency and disclosure about what the board is going to discuss. Everything else on the agenda is published in full, and this is something that's not.
Okay, any other comments to that?
It's my understanding that the new business item line was to be used as a way to inform any administration or staff or board members of an upcoming item so that they could be prepared at the next meeting for it. There may not always be an item on that line, but if there is, that would be the placeholder for it.
When you put the title of new business, that indicates that there's going to be an action or potential for action, and I think it's a misnomer that is, at worst, it's a misnomer, but it has no business belonging on that agenda as new business.
Would you like it to be renamed Potential New Business?
No, I don't think that that does any justice either.
Yeah, I guess I'll jump in here. I'm a little confused by this because every training I've had, as people know, I'm learning how to do some of the rules on this actually indicate an agenda with new business on it everywhere I've looked, including the Robert Swir's orders proposed agendas. The IASB presented one without new business as a bad one, and one with new business as a good one. So I'm actually a little bit, I mean, I appreciate your comments, but I'm a little baffled by them.
That's too bad. I'm sorry, I thought I was pretty clear and succinct on it, so I don't know. Maybe maybe changing the name to Board Discussion, Open Discussion, or something like that would be fine, but to put on here as new business really is a disservice to the public and the board in general. And I've said this before, and I will stand by it.
Yeah, I guess when we can look at potential names of potential new agenda items for future meetings, if that would appease Mr. Troy.
I don't think we need to do that. I think it's pretty standard, I think it's a pretty standard thing that's on on agenda. I don't, I don't see a problem.
Even even in your board where you're employed doesn't do new business, they have a board discussion topic section.
So you don't disagree with the concept of it?
Correct.
You're arguing for the semantics of it?
Correct.
So in the interest of time, can we have a discussion of what would be acceptable? Can we call it Potential New Business?
Or Discussion.
Yeah, Discussion Items or Open Discussion Items?
That would work just fine.
Okay.
Or do we take a vote and decide that new business is appropriate for the majority?
Well, if that's what the board majority chooses, that's fine.
I would suggest, because I think it's more, the new business part is probably more valuable towards the end of the meeting after the most of the meetings are discussed, that you just slot something near the end of the meeting that you can have a second line for, say, superintendent's report that's meant to address anything that's come up to be provided for in a future meeting.
So call it superintendent's report?
I just have a second, second, the chapter two superintendent's, what is superintendent's discussion.
Any other comments on that?
It doesn't matter. I don't understand why we've got to rename this and whatnot. You get the same result no matter what.
Right.
I don't find this necessary at all.
All right, we will resume in public session at 7:02 PM after suspending closed session. Previously, can I have a roll call?
Mr. Fabiano.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bitman.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Here.
All right, with no action out of a closed session, we will move forward to number four, the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll take it with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. One public comment. All right, looks like we have one public comment. So, Ms. Wiley, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you very much.
You need to push the button, I think.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, as someone that's been attending board members or board meetings for a long time, the transparency that has gone on recently with the meeting minutes, they've been published very, very quickly, and I'm really happy that they're very thorough. I know we have a new secretary, so thank you very much for really putting effort into putting those out there, because I think it's very important for people that can't attend the meetings and don't have time to sit and watch the meetings online, to be able to do that. So, thank you very much, and thank you to the board for signing them and getting them published. So, I wanted to kind of just put that out there, something really good that X team's board doing. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless there's anyone else who would like to make a public comment? No? We will move forward to number six, revision and adoption of the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Like to move item 10, please.
Okay, again, let's stop and have some explanation. Mr. Troy, why would you like to move number 10?
There's nothing on there for one, and number two, stating that it's going to be new business is a way around the Open Meetings Act and providing information to the public. So, there's true transparency and disclosure about what the board is going to discuss. Everything else on the agenda is published in full, and this is something that's not.
Okay, any other comments to that?
It's my understanding that the new business item line was to be used as a way to inform any administration, or staff, or board members of an upcoming item, so that they could be prepared at the next meeting for it. There may not always be an item on that line, but if there is, that would be the placeholder for it.
When you put the title of new business, that indicates that there's going to be an action or potential for action. And I think it's a misnomer that is, at worst, it's a misnomer, but it has no business belonging on that agenda as new business.
Would you like it to be renamed Potential New Business?
No, I don't think that that does any justice either.
Yeah, I guess I'll jump in here. I'm a little confused by this, because every training I've had, as people know, I'm learning how to do some of the rules on this, actually indicate an agenda with new business on it everywhere I've looked, including the Robert Swir's orders, proposed agendas. The IASB presented one without new business as a bad one, and one with new business as a good one. So, I'm actually a little bit, I mean, I appreciate your comments, but I'm a little baffled by them.
That's too bad. I'm sorry, I thought I was pretty clear and succinct on it, so, I don't know. Maybe changing the name to Board Discussion, Open Discussion, or something like that would be fine, but to put on here as new business really is a disservice to the public and the board in general. And I've said this before, and I will stand by it.
Yeah, I guess we can look at potential names of potential new agenda items for future meetings, if that would appease Mr. Troy.
I don't think we need to do that. I think it's pretty standard, I think it's a pretty standard thing that's on agenda. I don't see a problem.
Even in your board, where you're employed, doesn't do new business, they have a Board Discussion Topic section.
So, you don't disagree with the concept of it? You're arguing for the semantics of it?
Correct.
So, in the interest of time, can we have a discussion of what would be acceptable? Can we call it Potential New Business?
Board Discussion.
Yeah, Discussion Items or Open Discussion Items?
That would work just fine.
Okay.
Or do we take a vote and decide that new business is appropriate for the majority?
Well, if that's what the board majority chooses, that's fine.
I would suggest, because I think it's more, the new business part is probably more valuable towards the end of the meeting after the most of the meetings are discussed, that you just slot something near the end of the meeting, that you can have a second line for, say, superintendent's report that's meant to address anything that's come up to be provided for in a future meeting.
So, call it superintendent's report?
I just have a second, the Chapter Two Superintendent's, what is Superintendent's Discussion.
Any other comments on that?
It doesn't matter. I don't understand why we've got to rename this and whatnot. You get the same result, no matter what.
Right.
I don't find this necessary at all.
All right, I mean, I agree, actually, with Mr. Fabiano, that it's better suited at the end of the meeting, and I know that in some of the agendas it had been, but I think in this one it got slotted after mine, which is no big deal. Does anybody have any motions to change or to adopt?
In the interest of not having to address this every other meeting, I move it to the bottom of the list, and under Superintendent's Report.
I don't know that that really captures, it's not a superintendent's thing, it's a board thing, where we are bringing new business to the table to possibly be looked at by district admin, district cabinet, for future meetings. I mean, I guess I'd be okay, in the interest of, you know, collaboration, to call it Discussion, or whatever Mr. Troy has suggested, but I don't think the Superintendent's Report really, really captures it.
I would agree that if we're going to move it to the end, put it under someone's report, it would probably be better under the president's report than the Superintendent's Report at that open discussion, but you're usually towards the front, so maybe moving that to the end and renaming that.
I agree to have it at the end.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we move the adjournment to number seventeen, we move, we strike number ten, we add number sixteen, which is Board's Discussion, which will be for new agenda items for future meetings. Do I have a second?
Second, go ahead.
Thank you, Mike. And can we have a roll call though?
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Bitman.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Fabiano.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yep.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you for the discussion. We will forward with the adoption of the change to the agenda, and we will move forward with number seven, the Superintendent Report. Welcome, Ms. Lombard.
Thank you. First, we'll go ahead with donations, and then I'll go through with some report items. We have one donation from Mr. Dave Church, donated a 1988 Lund Renegade to the Bass 15. Not sure what that boat looks like, but it is of great value, and I know the high school and the district are very appreciative of that. So, thank you to that family for that donation. Then, moving forward, we'll first start, and I can't express just how honored and privileged I feel to be sitting up here today in the role of interim superintendent for the school year. As you all know, this is my 23rd year in the district, called at home as a student and a graduate, and so the staff and the family and the community here are pretty special to me, and to be able to lead this year, as we've got some change going on, and doing that. Very humbled and very privileged to be able to do that. And in my opening day letter that's going out to families and to staff, just share, I had written in there that I truly believe that there is no greater collective of individuals than we find here in District 158. And that goes for the staff, it goes for the administration, it goes for the board, and the community, and the families, and, most importantly, our students. And so, that collective is really what makes District 158 such a special place. We talked about that staff component of that collective. It's often a pretty relaxing time for many of our staff members over the summer months, and they're getting re-energized and doing all those things, hopefully with families and loved ones. But I wanted to just kind of give an update of some of the things that we are doing here in the summer. HR's been rocking and rolling every day. We will be welcoming around 60 new staff members. Those staff members will be joining us here in just a few weeks, so it's August 10th and 11th, our new staff, and shortly after that, our existing staff will be coming back. And so, really have been preparing for their arrival. O and M, operations and maintenance, I won't steal Doug Thunder, but all of our projects are moving, even with a little bit of rain that we've had, moving forward, and we will be ready to go with all of those things for the start of the school year. Transportation's been busy, taking all of that information of our student ridership, putting on all of those routing components. I won't say we're fully hired yet, but we're continuing to work through those pieces, and we've been working with them to ensure that we have some things for some consistency, so families have that information. But here, within a week, week and a half, that information will be public for routing information, and so we are moving forward, and we'll be ready for that. Component, tech team, lots of replacements with Chromebooks at various levels, doing that replacement cycle with laptops for some of the staff. But one thing I do want to highlight is that through a digital equity grant, some funding that we had set aside, one for Chromebooks that were in the budget, as well as Air Teams, which are a way that our students and staff will be able to have that projection wirelessly. We've got it in some of our places here, as we try that out. A digital equity grant is going to speed that process along, as well as help with the budget that we do have through this new grant, and we'll be able to get those things going, so they're ordered, and all of your team is raring to go to get that set. So, pretty excited about that. And then, just why we're here, right? Our Teaching and Learning Department has been doing so much. We've had some turnover and change in there, but all of the initiatives and the work has been moving forward, that we've had professional development in the area of the science of reading for our secondary, a lot of things with our math, behavior management, and SEL, and how that ties with our academics. So, all of that, we're excited to be putting through, ready to go next week. We have a full week of a variety of meetings with our district leadership teams, and making sure that we are ready for those staff when they walk through that door on the 14th and 15th, helping them to do their job, right? That's what we're here to support, each and every one of them for that. And we'll be sending out to all of you what those institute A plans look like, and you're welcome to join us for any or all of those pieces, and just kind of get to welcome back our staff alongside of us as we're moving forward with that. Raiders Read Together, we had a special guest read this past week, Mrs. Murray read, and had a great time with our students there, and we have one more reading at the Huntley Public Library, which will be next Monday. So, Dr. McCrindell and I will be rounding that out with a special activity with all of the students, and again, publicizing that we will have our end of the year, end of the summer Raiders Read Together program kickoff with the movie on August 2nd on the football field. So, all of you are welcome to come on out and celebrate the wonder that we've read, as well as moving forward to the school year. So, dusk, I don't know what dusk means, I'm going to guess dusk means about 8:00, 8:30 in the summertime. So, one other piece, at the last meeting, we had some discussion in administration, we were going to come back with some plans here in the near future on FOIA, and how we would look at that piece. As you'll see in the personnel report, we do have a change in our technology department, and so, just ask for a little grace, we're still working on that, but as we bring in that new person, we will finalize that plan and bring that forward here in a upcoming, but very soon, board meeting to be able to circle back around on that discussion there. So, with that, I just, the last thing I just want to end in, I've done a lot of reflection, right? We've had a lot of change in this district in a short amount of time. We've had change with the board. We've had change with the superintendent. We will have some change in our district cabinet level and some administrative positions, as well as just on an annual basis, staff changes, right? We have new staff that we welcome into all of our roles across the board. And sometimes that change happens to us, and sometimes we're the cause of that change. But one of the things, you know, change makes people worry, right? There's that resistance, and it just seems natural to have that little nervousness or worry, but we don't even realize that change is constant, right? It is always going to happen. And so, you know, one of those things that they started to really reflect on, because I know as staff comes in, it's going to be, right? We've got some new leadership and new things that are going on. I want them to feel comfortable, and that change can be pretty exciting when we allow it to be. And so, by shifting that mindset, we can see the benefits that change brings, and change brings growth, it brings flexibility, it brings new perspectives and approaches, it brings strength and progress and opportunities, and as we as a collective whole embrace these benefits of the change that's coming upon us and has come upon us, I just think about the opportunities that we have to take our already great district even further. And so, I'm hoping that that's something that I'll be able to share with our staff as we move forward, to give them that comfortability in an uncomfortable time for some. And I just want to end that transition, through this transition period, the one thing that I know is constant, is that there's a continued collective commitment to our kiddos, and everybody here. We've got community members here, and community members out there, our staff, our administration, our family, and our board, that are committed to our students. And so, in four weeks from yesterday, as this was shared with me, as is today in the meeting, we are going to be ready to welcome about 8,400 kiddos here, and we're going to do this together. Any questions on the updates?
Thank you, Jessica. Yeah, thank you, Jessica. All right, so we will move on, if I have read my report correctly, to Mr. Altman, number eight, an update.
Thank you very much, I have a few updates, one of the updates being the monthly fiscal memo. Really just want to highlight, I know Ms. Lombard reflected upon many of the departments, and fiscal is no different. Very busy over the summer month, closing the year end, and preparing for the year and audit, which is scheduled in about three weeks from now. So, we are rocking through what we need to do to get things done, and when we walk through the May Financial Executive Summer Report, I'll point out a few things that we do at year end that kind of help true up what you're looking at, so that we have a better financial picture as to how we ended the year. Other than that, there's a few other things that I do have on my fiscal memo that I'm going to talk about later this evening, so I will leave that to them, but other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the memo. And then, I did, we did receive a communication from Gina regarding contract services, and I could jump into that if there's no other questions on the fiscal memo.
Just one, and maybe, I'm wondering if this is the memo or some of the activity side of this, there was about $23,000, $25,000 spent on security stuff?
Safety and security?
Yeah, do you have any color to what that was? Or does Mr. Dean have color on that?
Mr. Dean should, if he's, oh, he is in the audience. Do you recall during the month? Yeah, we'd have to look at what you were looking at.
Yeah, just wondering what that was. I mean, we like investing in security, we want to keep our kids safe, but just curious what that was.
Yeah, it could be anything from camera work to, yeah, we'd have to really look.
Mr. Bitman, was that the report that Mr. Dean filed last month, and we have the audit, the safety audit done? And I'm referring to, there was actually some spending that on that, so I'm wondering if it was connected to that?
It was connected to that audit, is my question.
Oh, I don't know. It could be. I guess we'll have to wait for them to come back. Thank you.
Yeah, we could, I'll connect with you to see what you were looking at, and we can get that answered to you.
Yeah, I don't mean to pick out cherry picks off.
Mr. Altman, can I ask a question about policies? How much money can you spend before you have to get board approval? I haven't looked at the board policy, so forgive me. I noticed that there was like $30,000 that was spent on architect fees for the fields and the, what was it, the life program, and, or light program. So, I'm just, I'm curious about how much discretion you have, and how much money you can spend before that happens, because that seems like a lot of money to me on a car for an architect.
I don't want to say there's exceptions in the code, but generally, right, we have a PO process, so that the board does have an opportunity to see open POs before we actually do pay those things. But if we were to enter into a construction contract, that's a little different, right? If we have a construction project whereby the construction project is over $50,000, we have to go through a bidding process, and if we go through a bidding process, well, that ultimately gets approved by the board during the bidding process, so when those invoices come in, including the architecture fees and the like, they were previously, right, approved. A lot of times, you might see half a million dollars, right, $400,000 of Chromebook purchases coming in. You would see that on a PO, you're not necessarily going to see that on any bid type situation, because Chromebooks and technology are excluded from the contract bidding within the state of Illinois. So, at some levels, it's $25,000 for contracts, but in other situations, well, it should be everything, which is why we go through the PO process, to make sure the board has an opportunity to see the POs before they then get paid. On occasion, there's impress checks, and impress checks are things that, well, just come in, come at NYCOR Energy, there's things, umpire fees, right? Things like that where we need to get people paid, and that's what the impress report is for, for those types of situations. I hope that kind of answers your question.
Well, that makes sense to me, but we have a PO that needs to be paid, but who approves $30,000 to an architect to give us this? You know what I'm saying? Like, I don't know if I'm making sense.
Yeah, no, you're making sense, complete sense, but it's, I mean, within, I mean, there was, I believe there was some discussion at the board level, and again, not everything's voted on, if it's in the, if there's budgeted dollars for things, I mean, there's authority within our budget to do a lot of these items.
I'm just trying to understand, I'm just trying to figure it all out, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question.
My peers have recently figured out some of this question, and stated all my purchasing laws with our policies, the language, and there is, you've got to read deeper into the state statute, but in the matter of construction, it is $50,000. And I just want to clarify that, Mark.
Oh, I thought it said $50 for construction. Twenty-five, well, for everything else.
Right, the norm is 25,000, but there's exceptions, construction being, I got to dig in, I don't probably get any exceptions.
I'm not really looking for discussion on this, but at some point, maybe we could, maybe you could point me either into an email or publish what the delegation of authority is, like what level, who has what purchasing authority within the district. So, you know, what can a building principal buy without going up to the superintendent, et cetera? I assume we have a policy like that.
I can share with you what we have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now into, Gina had asked a question about, she noticed within the accounts payable report and or purchase order report, I'm not sure which, but about contracted services, because it appeared like we had a lot of contracted services. And I'm assuming, you know, we have contracted services for custodial, contract custodial, we have contracted services in transportation for the taxi cab companies, for the additional services that we are receiving within the transportation department. I assume you were asking about contracted services, maybe because we have this past year had a lot of contracted services for a lot of contracted employees in the Special Education Department, so that we can ultimately meet the needs of our students within IEPs, primarily the result of not being able to hire staff in certain areas, whether it's speech paths, or whether it's a psychologist. I'm looking at a list here of contracted services that we had from various, various companies, whereby we contracted for a psychologist, speech paths, social workers, bilingual evaluations, paras and nurses, SES teachers, occupational therapy, and a board certified behavior analyst.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, so quite a few different contracted services, and some of these just come on, and maybe DeeDee could talk to a little more to this, but some of these just come on last minute, where there's a need within an IEP, and we have to meet that need, and we don't have either enough staff, or we don't have the right staff, which are some of these, for sure. But I will say that this past year, this really spiked, it spiked big.
It just seemed like there were a lot of dollars spent on contracted staff, and I understand that there's shortages, I just wondered what we were doing to kind of curb that and get our own people in, to make sure that we don't have to innocuously spend money.
DeeDee and I are very much on the same page on this, and I think she can talk to some of the things that we're talking about and doing moving forward, because our goal moving forward is to make sure that this doesn't really happen at this level, well, ever again, hopefully.
Yeah, so I would just acknowledge a little, yeah, I would acknowledge that, yes, our last resort really as a district is to look at contractual services. You know, we have an allocation, obviously, in Special Education, to make sure that the services we have outlined in an IEP are met. Often, that comes with support from related service providers, or professional nurses, occupational therapists, and so, I think important to know, yes, I started in the district on the first, one of the first things Mr. Altman and I did was look at contracts that we had in the previous school year, we're looking at open vacancies.
I'm not really looking for discussion on this, but at some point, maybe we could, maybe you could point me either into an email or publish what the delegation of authority is, like what level, who has what purchasing authority within the district. So, you know, what can a building principal buy without going up to the superintendent, et cetera? I assume we have a policy like that.
I can share with you what we have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now into Gina had asked a question about, she noticed within the accounts payable report and or purchase order report, I'm not sure which, but about contracted services because it appeared like we had a lot of contracted services. And I'm assuming, you know, we have contracted services for custodial, contract custodial. We have contracted services in transportation for the taxi cab companies, for the additional services that we are receiving within the transportation department. I assume you were asking about contracted services, maybe because we have this past year had a lot of contracted services for a lot of contracted employees in the special education department so that we can ultimately meet the needs of our students within I E Ps, primarily the result of not being able to hire staff in certain areas, whether it's speech paths or whether it's a psychologist. I'm looking at a list here of contracted services that we had from various, various companies whereby we contracted for a psychologist, speech path, social workers, bilingual evaluations, paras and nurses, S E S teachers, occupational therapy and a board certified behavior analyst.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, so quite a few different contracted services. And some of these just come on and maybe DeeDee could talk to a little more to this. But some of these just come on last minute where there is a need within an I E P and we have to meet that need and we don't have either enough staff or we don't have the right staff, which are some of these for sure. But I will say that this past year, this really spiked. It spiked big.
It just seemed like there were a lot of dollars spent on contracted staff. And and I understand that there are shortages. I just wondered what we were doing to kind of curb that and get our own people in to make sure that we don't have to naughtlessly spend money.
DeeDee and I are very much on the same page on this. And I think she can talk to some of the things that we're talking about and doing moving forward. Because our goal moving forward is to make sure that this doesn't really happen at this level, well, ever again, hopefully.
Yeah, so I would just acknowledge a little, I would, yeah, I would acknowledge that, yes, our last resort really in the district is to look at contractual services. You know, we have an allocation, obviously, in special education to make sure that the services we have outlined in an I E P are met. Often that comes with support from related service providers or professional nurses, occupational therapists. And so I think important to know, yes, what I started in the district on the first, one of the first things Mr. Altmeier reminded me did was look at contracts that we had in the previous school year. We're looking at open vacancies into this upcoming school year, actively trying to work on our, you know, our hiring and our recruitment and retention making. Those are all goals of ours and reduce the number of contractual services. So I think we share that goal. It is always better to hire within the district. And so we are really making active, active efforts to do that and provide all of our students with the special education services that are required and also limit the number of times we have to. The reality is we will likely have to engage in contracting services from time to time. What that looks like, we're still trying to determine because we still have open vacancies and we're actively hiring. So I don't know if that helps that you know that, you know, we had contracts that we had engaged in last year that, you know, for example, we won't be engaging in in the upcoming years. We've made some decisions around that. And we're just trying to be really intentional about any contract that we've been engaged in. So we will exhaust all of our efforts first for hiring within and then we'll look at contractual services as needed. But we will definitely work to reduce that if we identify the need.
I figured you would. I just wanted the public to be aware of how much money is spent on contractual services. And that money could be going to teachers and students and programs versus paying a contract company. I mean, the money that that we spend doesn't go to the providers. It goes to the contract company. And so it just, it was alarming to see how much money is being spent on those services. So, thank you.
Mrs. Geller, in that, not that it negates the funds there that were allocated, but with the new grant that's out there, that the district will qualify for teacher vacancy, it's a three-year grant, and while we're in the process of writing that and working through that, we should be barring all things awarded that three hundred and eleven thousand dollars for each of the next three years. But hopefully, our recruitment and our retention efforts that we can utilize and come up with some really creative things to not have that need for as many in the future.
Yep, thank you.
I'm just going to say, but it's also important to note, these aren't intentional, most of this isn't intentional. I mean, it's expenses we would avoid if we could. So it's not like we're wantonly spending. It is a bad year procuring staff at the levels that were needed for special ed. Special ed is an extremely expensive area of any district to operate. And it gets really bad when you're using contracted services, absolutely. But at the end of the day, the services do have to be provided regardless. So if you don't have them, you got to go outside.
And I understand that. And I wasn't trying to say that that we were just lilly nilly, you know, doing contracted services, but I just want, wanted to just point out that that we need to be aware of it. That's all. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful as you go through the closing out the year, Mark or Mr. Altmeier, and capture how much we are over because of contract services and maybe break it up a little bit, how much was special ed, how much was substitute. It would be, it would be good to look, because the budget looks like we're actually coming in with a little bit of surplus because of management in other areas. And if this other piece is, if it was over, it'd be nice to know what that was.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you mentioned surplus, but but I think the next item on my agenda, eight point two is the revenue and expenditure report. So in front of you, you do have the May twenty twenty-three financial executive summary. And through May, we do have a deficit that we are sharing with you of one point eight million dollars. Now, this is only through May and does not reflect while closing year end and booking all of the year end adjustments and recording and finalizing property tax revenues that come in through the end of July. So if you were to look at the face of the executive summary statement and you look at total local funds, the local funds are primarily the property tax line items. And if you see the year to date versus budget, seventy million versus eighty one million, well, property taxes, that line item is recognized on a quarterly basis within our system. So at year end, we will true up and finalize the local revenues. And we finalize the local revenues because that's when we collect our property taxes, primarily in the month of the last week of May and then June and July, which then gets recognized. So you can see with only one month to go, we're only at eighty seven percent of revenue. Probably what's more important to look at is total federal revenues. Well, this year was a little different because we had a lot of E S R monies coming our way and a lot of those monies were spent in the latter half of the year. And we have to file expenditure reports to then receive the money from the state of Illinois to receive the reimbursement. So you could see year to date, we've only received fifty four percent of the expected federal revenues. And those, the majority of those are now being written for via the final quarter's expenditure report, which then that number will be trued up at year end as well. So there's a lot of truing up at year end for the month of June because of expenditure reports and property taxes coming in. So when total revenues are at eighty seven percent, yes, we expect that number to go up, but we also expect a lot of our expenses to go up. So I'm not saying you can't, this gives good information throughout the year, but at year end, right, things radically change a little bit because of the final federal dollars that are spent and reimbursed and property taxes coming in and then accrual entries and things, audit entries that need to take place for the annual audit. Okay? So knowing, and we talked about, and this is, these are good numbers here, we talk about health insurance. Health insurance is running, well, on the report you have, well over a million dollars unfavorable. But I do have the June numbers and the June numbers came in as, well, total claims in nine hundred and forty two thousand versus May's nine hundred and fifty five thousand. So with that, as well as the settlement costs, which are the fixed fees related to Blue Cross Blue Shield, it looks like we're going to be approximately two point two million dollars over on the health insurance line. So right now, I am not comfortable that there will be a surplus. In fact, I think there will be a deficit as a result primarily of the health insurance side. On the salary side, we think there's, there's going to be a little favorability there, primarily due to open positions not being filled. But that's offset by the extra money we pay for extra duty for teachers to fill into classrooms, the additional dollars over budget and on the substitute teaching line because we needed, we needed to bring people in to fill those classrooms. So I will definitely share that when we have all that information. And normally, we share that information around the September timeframe because we'd like the auditors to come in who would assist in a lot of those audit entries. And then we're much closer to final. So we will, we will definitely do that. So I did want to share that report. Sometimes this report, this May report in the past has been just a one pager to say, hey, this is where we are directionally. There's so much going on in the month of June because of property taxes and federal revenues. I just wanted the new board members to understand that.
Yeah, so a couple, you are going to get there on the, because you're way short. So you're going to get there on the federal money?
It, it, there's a lot of E S R carryover money, so we won't get all the way there. Now, normally, right, E S R is high because, oh, E S R. Federal revenue budgeted at eight million dollars were high because of all the E S R dollars. But we don't have to use all the E S R dollars. We have until September of twenty four. So there, there could be a big tranche of federal dollars that I will have to rebudget and of just the related expenses in F Y or F Y twenty four. So the budget that we're talking about later today and all of the drafts that we have shared with the board, we omitted all of the E S R dollars and all the E S R related expenses until we knew what the final rollover amounts will be. And when we get those final rollover amounts, we record the revenue and we record the expense. It's an in and out to there. It's an in, in and out type of deal.
All right.
But there will be carryover on that federal line item as well.
Okay, so you, you are going to.
But there's also favorability on the expense side.
You're going to need to correct in here on the insurance thing. It's not putting across in the year to date. Oh, I got confused for a second because I knew we were going to be over budget, but that would.
Oh, that is not putting across.
Yeah, it is not. So.
Yeah, it is on the bottom, but it's not on the top.
Right.
Thanks.
So, right, and it makes sense. We're running it, you said one million a month?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, an order of a million.
Yeah, yeah, the bottom number is right because that number agrees with my general under.
Right.
On the month horizon.
Okay.
But thank you for that.
And from a long-term basis, the E S R, there's an E S R cliff that's coming, right? E S R twenty four, I believe it is.
Correct, after we utilize all the funds through September of twenty four. Now, it's only a cliff if we utilize E S R dollars for continuing type of expenses. We have a few things, but we, we worked very hard throughout the years, over the last several years, to make sure that the things that we were applying for.
We didn't hit a cliff.
We didn't hit a cliff. There will be a few things.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so to Ms. Geller's point, I mean, purchase services are already over budget through May for the whole year. So that's going to, that's pretty, right, because I'm sure June's got some stuff in it.
So, yeah. Yeah, that's primarily contracted services.
Just based on what I'm seeing, the revenue side is still, for me, both cloudy exactly where you're going to come in. But expense wise, we're not in great shape this year.
Yeah. The big ones offhand are contracted services, the substitute teaching line, the extra duty line. Although at the end of the day, there is going to be a small, small, I believe, favorability or at budget on the salary line item. On the benefit line item, we're going to be over two point two million over, plus or minus, you know, pay, which is that favorability. The purchase service line is primarily driven by the contracted services line.
Okay, so you had the big, big budget that I know we spent in June because it has Chromebooks, stuff like that. How are you going to come in there? You have a big differential there. You have almost four million dollars of budget left coming into June. Is that going to be a favorable side?
I didn't understand the question.
The question is, on the same line, on the operating expenditures, the supplies year to date through May is still, there's a three point nine five million dollar short budget favorably, okay? And I know June is a big month for spending that, those items, because of.
Correct.
I mean, because it's.
Yeah, I, I don't have a pulse until we officially close, which actually almost any day here, we're going to be done with the internal interest and close the month. And then I'll have a better idea on that line item. A lot of times, there is favorability at the building level and within, you know, many of the departments, there's favorability here and there, which will help drive that number. But the majority of this number would be driven in technology operations and maintenance curriculum, right? The curriculum budget, those are the supply lines.
All right, and then just a little smaller dollars, but thankfully smaller dollars favorably. Mr. Rinkezak, I don't know if you've seen your, your gas and electric, where that's at.
I'll talk about it later.
Okay, I'll let you talk about it later, but it's phenomenal where that's at.
Yeah. A lot of work to do through the audit. Yeah, we'll keep the work fresh.
Anything else, Mr. Altmeier?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. We'll move to number nine, the president's report, just a couple of comments. One of the things that I believe this, the role of the board member has is kind of voice of the community. So I've been with others, kind of meeting with a lot of different people. We had only one meeting this month, so I met with several staff of District one fifty-eight, parents of District one fifty-eight, former staff of District one fifty-eight. And actually, I had the pleasure of going to a neighborhood in Del Webb where I'd say fifty or sixty people showed up to filter me with questions for ninety minutes, which, which was actually a really enjoyable time. And one of my takeaways from that is to try to see if we can build a little bit more of a bridge with Del Webb. I know pre-COVID, we had a lot of volunteers and a lot of support from that. So I think Ms. Lombard is going to take that on as something we really want to try to pursue to help in whether it's just reading in a classroom or, or helping out, be very helpful. On the staff side, that I've heard, the focus really is around the discipline and really the support of the staff within the building. And I think we're going to tackle some of that in the August third meeting. And I think that's a really important time to discuss because we, there's a lot of staff who, from what I can tell, have been there for ten, twenty years, dedicating themselves to teaching our kids where times aren't feeling supportive. And I think that's something that we really need to work on. And I know Ms. Lombard is aggressively working towards that and I appreciate that. And if this is her first meeting, I do want to welcome her to this table here and just say I think she's handled with immense amount of grace all the changes that have happened. And that's, that's a really a good thing. And it shows the kind of connection you have to everybody in this district. And I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And accepting us as newcomers here on the board is appreciated. And lastly, just maybe a moment of just as someone who's looking out there, one of the feedbacks that we see all the time is parents, the kids are not acting very well in the classroom. There's a lot of issues out there and we don't have a lot of respect for peers from our students. We don't have a lot of respect for adults and we need to do better with our kids. And even if we think our kids are great, we need to work on that to try to provide an example in the schools. And I think that will help make things better. And I guess some of the stuff I've been reading is almost every teacher will say the key to a student's success is the parent's involvement. So we're about to start up the school year, go to the get to know your teacher, go visit all the classrooms in the high school, visit all the teachers, go to the parent teacher conference room, join the P T O, join the P T A, help the boosters, do whatever you can to get involved because your kids will remember that and I think they'll be better for it. So that's all I have for a comment. On that, we'll move to number eleven, community relations and student outreach. Ms. Murray.
All right. I don't really have anything to report other than looking forward to engaging with Del Webb residents for an outreach, as Ms. Lombard mentioned. Just getting into the school year and seeing how I can help with anything and even with Denise here, our new communications director, yeah, looking forward to, especially based on her too, and see what we can do too. Really keep the positives of our district more than ever. So whether that be a social media or this or that, I know I want to be a part of that. So that's all I have. And then we have, we have some lawyer requests, a few of those. Any questions on those? Yeah, and then that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Moving to number twelve, Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Troy.
Good evening, Mr. Rinkezak. Item twelve thousand one, O N M updates. Anything to highlight on the O N M updates, please? Yes. First of all, I'd like to apologize to the board. This year, I've missed more board meetings than probably my entire career. I've had a lot of personal challenges. My son was injured pretty seriously in my life and some medical challenges that I had to support them. But they're getting better and I'm able to get back to work, do whatever I could remotely to support the great team that we've got. I'm very thankful that Assistant Director Kevin and Jennifer and all the people in our team did a great job of getting things rolling. Our construction projects, I'm just going to do a quick summary for you, just a very high level. I'll let you know that, number one, they are all on track for delivery except for one. It should be no surprise, I think, in June. I've lost track of time in my life. I apologize. I think it was in June or very late May where we awarded the exterior window repairs, the curtain wall repairs at the high school. I'm thankful the contractor that's doing the work, Harvey Embrace, is immediately jumping on it as best they could. The work that is interior to the building is a part of that project. They'll be completed before school starts. The work that is exterior to the building, the materials are, have long lead times and, and materials are ordered. We're looking forward to them having enough material to do one room test before school starts. I've invited the dean of operations to meet with me and sit in a room for a little while while they're doing the kind of work they have to do to see if there's something we can manage to do on a school day and not be disruptive. And if he disagrees, well, the contractor has known the bid, the structure that I put together for that says that you're going to have to work around the school calendar and it may take a whole year to get it done. That's something we've known. Where, where the part in sites of the building will help to minimize the leaks, it won't be complete. It won't totally limit the failure of the insulated glass units. But it will, the components to limit some of the leaks will be completed in and the reward of giving enhancement into the fresh air intake for the spaces will also be completed, which is something I insist to be done. But everything else, I'm amazed at the progress on our new cooling systems that are going. the progress on our new cooling systems that are going in at Marlowe. Uh, they actually fired up the first one a few days ago. Uh, final testing with the manufacturer, who was present through the whole process, uh, has, uh, completed, uh, through four more. Uh, and they're confident they'll deliver right about the time, uh, the parent student and sixth grade visits take place at the school. Uh, the other big part of that site improvement there is access to the building with all the, uh, torn up entrances to, to access points to get to Marlowe. Um, they're actually, uh, doing the full depth reclamation right before they pave. There's, there's gonna be a lull after they stir all the cement and gravel base. Uh, everybody's gonna probably say, well, how come nothing's going on for about four days? That has to cure for a few days. And then the geotechnical engineer has to come and met, to come out and make sure that they didn't put too much cement and make it too stiff. Uh, if they do, it's just about a day process to go out there, do something they call microcracking, where they just loosen it up a little bit, um, so that it can be flexible and complement to the asphalt surfaces as flexible material. But it will be done on time. Uh, the, um, it's, it's gonna be, it's, it's, the access from Martin, I'm 100% sure, even if we get some rain, uh, we'll be able to get to Marlowe from Martin. Uh, if we get a tremendous amount of rain, we'll be done before school starts, but I don't know if we'll make it August 7th at the Halleus entrance. Um, but we'll be done before school starts. Uh, bus lot paving out here, I know it looks pretty rough right now, but they've got everything pressed to the point now, uh, they're pouring some concrete, and after that gets about a week of cure time, they'll be able to go through the process of, of actual paving. Uh, it's just always slow with that to do all the things you need to do to get near the end. But then it'll go quick. I've known the owner of the company for about 35 years. We've done business, and he promises me, uh, that we will be done before school starts. Um, a progress, as you leave, if, if it's still light out, and you look north of the road, you'll see, uh, the, the little drive over here, you'll need that some of the, the vegetation has been cut down real low between the solar, that's our existing solar and, and the drive, and that is for the little bit of compliment of solar for the buses. And the pilings are going in for that now. Um, that'll be delivered before winter, but that's not gonna disrupt any operations that we have. Um, we've got a, a preheated Heinemann that's, uh, ready to be commissioned. Uh, the roof at the high school, uh, I'm very relieved to know that, uh, that the lion's share of the work is done. Um, there's about another week of coatings and some safety lines painted on there and some touching up of flashings. Uh, but the lion's share of the work, and it's the kind of work that's left, that's not intrusive at all. That's just putting, uh, putting coatings and lines and things that, um, if the weather turns south, uh, it won't harm what we've got done so far. Uh, it'll just delay completion, and we've got plenty of time. So, good there. Uh, food lab at the high school, the renovation, which is sorely needed over there, we're actually gonna do the substantial completion, punchless inspection next week. That went very well. Um, and the track at Heinemann was done before we even got to July. Uh, we're just waiting for the school personnel over there to tell us that the lines are appropriately striped before we approve the final payment. Uh, there's been some changes in the, uh, I E S A rules on the transfer zones for relays, and, uh, we wanna make sure they got it right. I'm waiting to hear from them. Um, included in your packet is some information, uh, quarterly performance report, uh, from Forefront Power on our solar performance. Um, and, um, we're, we're doing okay. Uh, the only place we kind of are a little short on the margin, on, on the production rate that we're expecting is Heinemann had a little pickup. Uh, the, uh, they, they, they thought it was a transformer, maybe. They've checked the transformer, and they typically take oil samples and send them in for a laboratory test. They found out they were okay. They replaced the fuses, fired it back up. It took a while for that whole process, it usually does. Uh, but they're confident by the end of the 12-year, 12-month cycle that they will meet the, the performance goals. Uh, the really awesome news, though, is that, um, uh, something that just floored me, uh, this is, uh, we just saw the July bill. So, when we saw the June bill last month, uh, for the first time ever, um, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's part of the bill where they show the, um, the, uh, TCO contribution nomination, which is a charge on the bill that relates to several thousand dollars every month on each of our three campus bills. Um, and that, back in the day before, before we started our journey with energy conservation in 2009, each of the, our campuses, our TCO contribution nomination was typically 1,000 kilowatt hours, 1,000 kilowatts. That's ever, at any instant time with the maximum draw we've had, it's 1 megawatt. The June, uh, the June reports came in, and the TCO contribution is a negative number. So it's, it's just amazing. Um, and so, um, the, um, two of the three campuses are in the 200s. The third campus was, the Harmony Campus, which is our biggest drop, was actually a negative 460 kilowatt. So for six months, we're gonna enjoy a credit on the bill. Um, the last two months, the, the solar actually produced about 50% more power. Uh, we got a credit for 50% more kilowatt hours than the kilowatt hours we actually got billed for consuming at night. Um, our net cost at the meter, all the costs included, that go into your bill. I know one thing I do, I come home and Kathy says, here's the bill, and I quote on the table, and the first thing I look at is how many kilowatt hours is on the bill? How many total dollars is that bill? That's the net charge at the meter. My house typically is in 12 to 13 cents, and we're stink. Um, but here at work, it's 6.1 cents a kilowatt hour right now. That's just amazing. Back in the day before we started our journey, we were 10, 11 cents, on typical average all then. Um, so that's why you're seeing, uh, there's a little, uh, hopscotch going on, uh, between the LA Commerce Commission and Comnet right now on one of the critical reasons that we're so far under budget, Mr. Quagliano. And that is because after I gave, uh, Mr. Altmaier the budget forecast, they came in with this, uh, carbon credit, some kind of credit for carbon. And they, I, I reported to the board about a year, a month or two ago on this matter. There's a long name for it. Um, and I got kind of a paragraph from, a, a, a high level paragraph from the Comnet about explaining what it was about. Um, but, uh, it was, for every kilowatt hour that you buy, uh, that's reported on the meter, uh, there was a 4.3 cents a kilowatt hour credit given. And we, we enjoyed this for quite a while. And it was supposed to last until the season change. Unfortunately, it did not. Even though the Commerce Commission and Comnet agreed to a certain timeframe, they rebooted early. And they said, no, you know, we, we overestimated. It's actually 1.2 cents charge. So that was a 5.5 cent kilowatt hour swing. And then that was supposed to last for like three or four months. Well, guess what? Two months later, they changed it again. It's 0.08 cents, like something like that, the last bill or two. So, uh, it's moving all around. It's a target that's bouncing around. Um, if somebody in the board wants to know in depth about this, I'd be happy to sit down and go through with you. Just tell me one, just be quiet. And I could talk all day.
And, and at work, I've seen the same thing, because I scrutinize our electric bills at work. And, um, while we don't have solar, we, we do consume electricity. And I've watched this thing bounce as well. So what I've learned here, I've been able to apply it at the office. And, and, yeah, it, it's a bouncing rubber ball, and it, it's fascinating to watch, but yeah, it's not fascinating to watch.
On the natural gas side, um, since we do have a hedging position, uh, the market, uh, actually, I don't, Europe has decided to find another way to get the natural gas and, and, I don't know, I, I, I don't see it publicized, but I think some countries have given up and are back to buying it from Russia, though they don't wanna support it. I know that the Norwegian countries have turned into supplying the, the mainland of Europe a little bit more. But, um, that, that pressure on the market has relieved itself, uh, and, uh, the natural gas price has relieved. And since we've been hedging, we've enjoyed some pretty good prices. Combine that with the fact that we had the ridiculously moderate winter, probably one of the one, our most moderate I've ever seen in my 21 years here, uh, we didn't spend a lot of money on natural gas. So that's why you're seeing that the gas side, I do believe. Taxes on energy bills. One of my pet peeves is one government agency taxing another government agency. So we have to all pay finance office, the process bills between, pass money around between governments. So I took it upon myself, uh, out of frustration, uh, to, uh, put on paper, you, there's a, there's a page in here to share with you on what we're actually paying, uh, for taxes, uh, to the state and to the local government. As you can see, Square Barn, Square Barn campus, uh, which is the village of Donquin, we're actually also paying municipal taxes on our energy bills. Um, but, uh, we are paying state taxes too. That's $26,000 out of our energy budget, uh, that we're paying on, on taxes. And I've talked to legislators, and they happen to pass through it. It's not under pecking order of big deals. Um, so, um, I, I just want you to know, I've been working very hard on the tenure plan, uh, for capital projects. Uh, Mr. Altmaier and I are continuing to interact, um, where we need to squeeze to try to meet budget goals. Um, it's, uh, one of the change orders you're gonna see later in this, uh, in this, uh, Building Committee agenda items tonight on the roofing, um, I, I actually told a story about this at a conference recently, that, um, a good proactive maintenance, a prevent, a, a maintenance program where you replace things on a life cycle and not waiting to failure, uh, we say it's more cost effective. Uh, we kind of missed it a little bit on roofs. Uh, that is one significant amount of earth insulation that was replaced, but it was necessary. It was wet. Um, and I'll explain why and everything later. But it just goes a little bit to tell the story that, uh, I, I just recommend that to be careful, to think about where you're going. I'm leaving, uh, the district and retiring here in a year and a half, but I do, I hurt with this place. I hate to see it go down the tubes, but be careful. Um, there are pieces of equipment out there that I'll talk about next, next month, August 3rd, that are well beyond the expected life cycle. And we can run them to failure, but you could have some pain on emergency, emergency replacement is always a higher expense, uh, and a, and, and it also is gonna cost some, some inconvenience. Uh, so we wanna be careful on that. Um, GSF, our new service contractor started June 1. Uh, it's been fantastic. Um, I've, I've, since I've been able to get back in here more, I've walked some of the buildings now, uh, and my, even my custodians who work for me, uh, they worked for the district for like 10 years, uh, but some of them actually used to work for prior contractors and applied to work for District 158 team back in the day. And, uh, they're, they're, they're really good people. They were management level. And they've come to me and told me they've never seen this good a performance on the summer clean. I walked through Chesapeake, and I couldn't find one thing wrong, which is, I mean, there's a lot going on there. Usually they miss a little something, and they have to come back before school starts. But it's really good. Uh, they are, I think they're within, I'm sorry, two to four FTE right now of manpower, uh, already, which, uh, our last contractor never got there at all, ever. Um, so, so we're a real good place, uh, with them. Uh, they've got all their equipment ready to go. Last thing, and I appreciate your patience over here, Community Solar, just to give you a heads up. Uh, we have, that thing is still on the radar. It's just such a long process with the state of Illinois. Uh, Forefront Power had to take another interconnect app level. When you're doing Community Solar, it isn't just that one interconnect application, you have to do, they gotta name for it. Um, but it's gonna take three months. And it was applied four to five weeks ago. Um, so it's always been their expectation. This is a project that they'd actually break ground next summer. So I've been alerting Farmer Band, uh, that as, as, uh, harvest takes place, uh, we need to talk about, uh, next summer, uh, and that, and pull that option, uh, that we agreed to. We committed that we would do that as a district. I'd be happy to answer your other questions about, uh, what's going on in the operation maintenance department.
Yeah, I, I saw the, the roof one, and, and I know you're gonna bring that up and give us more detail on it, but thanks for, thanks for mentioning that, because the, uh, I, I do have a couple of questions on that. So I'll ask when the time's appropriate. Um, any questions from the committee or the board? All right. Thank you very much for the thorough report. Um, moving on to item 13.
All right, Ms. Gallagher, Special Education.
So I had the privilege of meeting with Ms. Lombard and with Ms. Gill, um, to talk about special education and the Special Education Committee. And we're going to use this committee to kind of highlight, um, all the good things that are going on in special education. We're gonna be providing updates monthly on, on different aspects of special education, and that will be done either by Ms. Gill or, um, maybe a staff member will talk about their particular program. Um, I'm pleased tonight that Mrs. Gill is going to talk about just a general overview of special education. She's going to provide a report for us. And so, thank you. All right. To help me navigate my first ever. So I, okay. Okay. With her left hand and all, you know, um, thank you. I, uh, really happy to be here. I've not met everyone yet. This is my first board meeting as Assistant Superintendent of Special Services, and very happy to be here. Uh, really excited to be joining the district. I know it is just exciting, lots of changes going on in the district that really excite me, and I'm, I'm, I'm just incredibly excited to be here and doing this work alongside all of you and our, our families here in Huntley. So I, I really do have a brief overview. I'll, uh, hopefully walk you through four things tonight, one of which is give you a little bit of background on me. I won't go into depth, but like I said, I have not met everyone. So I'll give you a little bit of background on myself. I'll give you a general overview of, of the, you know, Department of Special Services as I know it in this very short time, and, uh, identify some key areas of future focus for our department, and then just highlight some, uh, some ways in which we're targeting some of those key areas. So, um, very excited about partnering, you know, with everyone. But, you know, Gina and I have a similar background as speech pathologists and a passion for special education. So I think this is gonna be a great opportunity for us to focus on, on some of the wonderful work that is being done in special education, uh, because there, there are just so many wonderful things to highlight. That certainly does not mean things are perfect, but we are, uh, collectively working in a positive direction. So very excited about that. So with those four, um, uh, my name is Deanna Gill. You'll see most of the time, my name is DeDe, that's what I, I go by. So, uh, I felt like I should say that, because, um, you know, DeDe, Indiana, uh, so different. I don't know where Deanna even came from. So I go by DeDe, uh, it's the legal name, so you'll, you'll hear both names, but that's who I am. Uh, I've been 23 years in special education. It's been my entire career. I started as a speech pathologist, moved into special education and coordination. Uh, I've been an assistant principal for therapeutic day school, and I've been a director and assistant director of special education, um, and supported students from early intervention through transition age out. So, um, I have a true passion for special education. It is my life's work. Uh, and, uh, that's it. I started here July 1, so I am getting to know our district and what special education services look like here. Um, my research interest in the area of special education, I think that's a, a fun fact to know. Uh, there's research around the areas of dignity of risk, self-determination, and inclusion. Those are things that I'm certainly interested in. You're wanting to hear about those, though. Absolutely engage in any conversation with him in time. Uh, so just a general overview of special education in Huntley. Um, you'd find this information obviously on our school report cards, but I think it's important just to, to recognize our overall enrollment being around 8,500 students. We're a large district with about 13% of our students receiving special education with an I E T. That's, um, a little better than the state average if that's, um, you know, when you compare us as a district, um, within special education, there's a continuum of support. Um, you'll hear us talk a lot about the least restrictive environment, what that means. Uh, and essentially, you know, it's our effort to make sure every student is served in the district in the least restrictive environment. And so that's coded in, in a few different ways. Um, at the top, this is, in, at the top, 63% of our students, um, receive their support and services in the general education setting for greater than 80% of the day. So more than half of our students are receiving the majority of their education in general education. Uh, 23% of our students receive, um, the general education, or, sorry, their special education services in the general education setting between 40 and 79% of the school day. 12% spend, um, less than 40% in the general education setting. Um, we have 3% of our students in a separate facility, um, and that can be for a variety of reasons. So across our district, our numbers are, are lower than the state in comparison, um, but pretty, um, on target, um, you know, in, in our area and for what we do in special education. So that's our, our general overview. Um, we do provide, obviously here in Huntley, a full continuum of special education services. We provide services from early childhood through transition, which is students who are eligible for special education services, uh, through the school year in which they turn 22. There've been some recent changes, um, in, in the laws that support students in special education, but we at Huntley provide special education, uh, services from early childhood through age out. Um, our services are determined based on individual student needs, so every student we service has So every student we service has an individualized education program or plan called an I E P. And the way that students are supported, there's a wide variety of ways. So we talk a little bit about the types of service delivery we offer, our integrated, consultative, resource, direct instruction, specialized programming. And, you know, in addition to the special education teachers, we have a number of related service providers who also support those, those individualized plans. So anything from, you know, assistive technology and speech language pathology, special language manner, we have just a wide variety of people supporting students on a full continuum to ensure that they're making progress. In our district currently, our special education staff, and I'm just apologizing ahead of time if I've forgotten anybody, I think I've, I've sorted through all of, all of the spaces, but we have care professionals, administrative assistants, teachers, related service providers. I don't think I need to read this slide, but we just have so many individuals and I just want to say, every person I've, I've met so far, any of our related service providers, teachers, educators have, have been incredibly supportive and energized and I'm just really excited to work with this group of people. So those are some of the staff members. So some key areas of future focus, prior to me coming on to the district, they sent a survey out to our families and our staff in special services. So any family who had a student with an I E P received an invitation to fill out a survey. We had 64 families respond and 90 staff members respond to that survey. And in general, asked about five priority areas, communication, knowledge of special education, resources, culture and climate and inclusion. Those areas really came from some feedback and work that had been done previously through our special education advisory committee. So there had been a committee that was doing work around how do we get our families involved and get some voice and feedback. And, and in that group, everything that I got or received or read through, these were the five areas that were, were priority for the, for the families who were involved and So when I look at the results in each of those areas, I hold out for you, for you the key areas of future focus that the staff and families identified as areas that they'd like to see us move. And so in the area of communication, it was more effective communication systems at the district level. For knowledge of special education, more awareness regarding the continuum of services available. In the area of resources, it was access to programs, resources and professional development. For culture and climate, better recognition of staff and inclusion was more acceptance of students with special education needs by the whole community. So those were the key areas of future focus and I think we have some really great ways that we're going to work towards those future focus areas. So again, Gina had mentioned that one of the things we will do is, is through the Board of Education, well, the Special Education Committee, we will highlight a variety of special education, you know, areas and we're going to figure that part out together, you know, what do, what are our families and community members and staff members wanting to share, needing to share, what do we want to highlight. Maybe it'll be a great opportunity for us to always be thinking about, you know, the special education community. We will continue to have the Special Education Advisory Committee. I will lead that. It will be open to all and it will provide us with that insight and guidance through the, you know, through all of the, the growth areas that we have in this, in this department. We have a, we have hired a light principal. Light is our transition program for students receiving services 18 to 22 and really providing some specific oversight over the program development, the future program location, those things that have been highlighted as a pretty significant need in our community and especially in special education. And then I think really leveraging key partnerships that we have, we're resourced, you know, we have a lot of resources in our community and a lot of experts across our district. So leveraging our communications, our district communications, our parent liaison, community partnerships, continuing to build those, our state partnerships. There are a lot of ways we can leverage the resources we have to do this work in a, in a great way. So I'm ending my thing. I really am officially here. This is like the first official. I'm here and I'm ready and I'm, you know, all students always really resonate with everything that I do. So I hope that provided like a, okay, overview, it was a little light, not sure if I can capture it all, but.
Dee, I really appreciate all the time that you put into creating that. I'm looking forward to our ongoing partnership and our monthly meetings that we're going to have, prior to board meetings and all of the positives that we're going to share with the community about the great things that are going on in special education. I think this is a fantastic partnership and it's a move in the right direction. So I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'd like to ask you a question. Yeah, just thank you. That was very refreshing to hear that from the special ed side.
Thank you. It's been a while. Well, thank you. Yeah, I'm glad you're here. Welcome. Thank you.
Go ahead. Go right down the line. You're next.
All right. So, so welcome. I'm also very excited that you're here and I think the, when this idea came up about setting up a specialized committee, I think it is exactly the right thing for all students always. We need to make sure we're thinking about all the students we have in this district. And I really appreciate that we're going to do that and I'm happy they're here. I've only heard really good things about your energy and, and all the things you're doing with engagement. But let me jump into something. So the light program, as you're aware, has had a lot of discussion around it. And if you talk to some parents, probably seemingly no action. And in some ways, we've been waiting for you to come on board to help lead the way. What we need, I think to do, and I think you're aware of this, is we really need to bring the parents, the staff and yourself and the other admin together. And I think it should be done at Marlowe where the light program is so everybody can see what it looks like and come up with requirements. And then we can bounce that up against the four or five options that have been proposed and we can come together maybe in a non-binding way to really look for what does the collective special ed community that's going to utilize light to go forward because we need to solve this problem.
Yes, and I thank you for bringing it up. I know we talked earlier with Jessica Lombard about that very thing, you know, why I want to make sure that we are bringing that conversation, well, we all want to make sure we bring that conversation immediate and, and taking action and being very transparent about that. So I am sending out an email invitation to families whose students are enrolled in light, yourself, Gina, we've.
I'm going to get it.
No, I'm sending out an invitation to, to bring that steering committee back together to kind of get a check in. Where are we, you know, what, where were we last year and where are we going so that we have some real specific checkpoints and, and can create a very clear plan around that. So I know that from my, you know, from my lens in our department, that is a high priority goal to make sure that we have actionable items, make sure that, you know, the community is involved in the decision-making around that and that we have real viable options that we can follow through on. So I, I believe we're tentatively staying for August 2nd, so you will receive an email about that and families will as well, so that we can just start that conversation going with the light program specifically.
It's August 3rd.
I might be.
The movie's the second.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, are potential future parents using light going to be a part of that because, you know, if it was, if it was a building option, you would, you'd want the, the feedback when people weren't going to be in that? I don't know how easy that is to target or not, but.
Yeah, yeah, I, that's, it is a great question and maybe I can think about how we can do that. I'm certainly open to anyone who, you know, has a vested interest in and wants to be part of it in any way. I, you know, that, that for me, it is hard to kind of target. I don't, I don't know, but I'm happy to explore that and again, just inviting the voice of anyone who, who really is vested in, in the decisions around that and action planning. I'll, I'll look into that, see how I can maybe determine some of that.
And then just, sorry, one other thing. Kudos to the staff response on the survey day. 90, 90 staff responded to that?
Yeah.
I'm a little disappointed when I think if I did my math correctly, there's a thousand kids with I E Ps that only 64 parents responded to that, so.
I, you know, and some of that could have been timing. I, you know, it's end of school year, so like I'm a mom first, I've worked as, I'm not sure, but I'm guessing that it had more to do with the timing of it really towards the end of the year before summer starting and maybe not even knowing, you know, who I was yet because of the prior to be starting. So I'm guessing, but yeah, I'm very interested.
With a very engaged staff, that's, that's a really positive start. So that's all down the line.
Anything? No. Okay. Hi, Dee.
Hi.
I'm, I'm part of the specialized community, committee as well, so welcome aboard. Glad you're here. And I did the quick math as well as Mr. Bittman and yeah, 1,100 families plus or, or students, excuse me, on that, that percentage count that you had. So keep on that so that, you know, you get that engagement and participation so that we have the diverse feedback coming back and not just a very core group. So I encourage that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Anyways, yes.
Thank you. Welcome. I just want to say, great presentation. I would, I guess we all kind of picked up on that. I would encourage you to maybe like in 90 days, like maybe send out another one when it's not the end of the school year and just see what that engagement looks like and any, anything that, any progression that you've had that has been helpful because it's definitely been something we've talked about a lot up there.
Thank you. Yeah, I will absolutely continue to pursue family inputs, staff inputs and my, I can.
Thanks. Welcome.
Thank you again. And with that, Mr. Bittman. One, sorry. I would like to correct. It is August 2nd. It's before the movie, but it's well before the movie, so you.
Winning today. I'm going to end on that, no, I'm turning it off right now. Thank you.
Go to the movie and then, or no, go to the presentation and go to the movie.
Come together then the cell phone.
So it'll be done before dusk, whenever that is.
Exactly. All right. With that, Mr. Bittman, I'd like to turn it over to you for policy and legislative committee update.
Just, just one comment here. I sent, I sent an email to Ms. Lombard about this and just something that I'll probably bring up in the, whatever we term the new business as a potential agenda item. But I'd really like to understand, I think at the committee of the whole, maybe how each school is handling their cell phone policies because I'm kind of moved right now to set a district policy that says cell phones need to go into a cubby when you enter the classroom unless a teacher says there's a reason to use it in class. I think we just need to get the cell phones out of the hands of the kids when they're in the classroom. They need to start paying attention. I think there's, it's something that I think we need to do when someone sent me some information today that said upwards of almost like 70% of the schools are already doing that. So if, if we're already doing this in the schools, and I know there was some discussion about that, like the high school and other things, you know, maybe it's okay, but I, I think we need to look pretty hard at this because I think it's pretty detrimental to the learning environment if they're, they're sitting there playing video games.
We'll bring, we'll bring that through and probably part of that discipline behavior management, all of that, we can type that in.
Thank you, Jessica. So that's all I have for that. We'll move ahead to number 15, which is action items. So we'll move forward to 15.1 and we're talking about the minutes that have been provided June 1 and June 15. Any discussion around that? If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 1st and June 15th that are part of the agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We'll call both, please.
This is Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Cready.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Corviano.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. With that, it has passed. We'll move to 15.2, which is there's some policy updates. Do you have any comments about this, Ms. Lombard?
No, Mrs. Woods worked with all of our cabinet members as we looked through those components, so just a lot of updates. There were various, but those kinds of things that were changed in there. There was one with our concussion. I believe that was in their protocol of just adding another layer of someone to review our plans and things like that, just to, to make sure that all people who may be responding are, are part of what our protocols and plans will be. So any questions from what was in the packet?
Okay, there's no questions. I'll make a motion to approve the policy packet. Changes as listed in the agenda as noted. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Not sure which one of you guys got it down there, so I'll give it to Mr. Thompson. I heard him distinctly.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Corviano.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Cready.
Yes.
All right. With that, it'll pass. We'll move to 15.3, the curriculum committee. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Bittman. Dr. McKendall, you'd like to discuss the intergovernmental agreement between MCC and D-158.
Yes. This evening, the first item that I do have is the intergovernmental agreement between MCC and Huntley. This has been established for the last couple of years. It is an agreement that allows our own high school staff to teach dual credit courses. That does require different courses that they must have taken on their transcripts in order to have the right credit to be able to teach and give that high school credit, you know, the college credit here in the high school. And so right now, we do have quite a few courses that we offer through MCC. I included those in the memo. Staff and/or families can take this course for, for $25 a course this school year as the fee. And by taking this course, as long as they go to a school that accepts it, they're able to then get chance for some of that high school credit along with getting their credit here at Huntley High School. You can see that the courses that we have offered, you might ask why these courses. We generally offer them when we have staff members who have the endorsements and are able to do and offer those classes. So we add them as we continuously review what our, what staff members are running on, what they're interested in maybe taking from courses. We currently have some grant opportunities through MCC through our partnership and we're adding a couple of different staff members, staff members here I know that have taken some courses to enable themselves to be able to teach courses in the future once they get enough credits in that area. So this agreement is one that the ISB have approved as well as MCC, obviously, who is our local community college. And then ICCB, which is the Illinois Community College Board. And so they've agreed this and all of our local high schools in the area actually came together last year. The agreement wasn't as in-depth prior to this year. It was probably about a two or three page agreement and now you can see there's quite a few pages in there because there's just a lot of moving pieces when it comes to deciding which text you can allow between that was a college will allow as well as Huntley. It's us trying to make sure that we maintain our own rights to be able to offer some of the things we want to do, but then also the MCC wants to make sure that we're meeting their expectations as well since they are the ones giving that college credit. So this agreement is one that each of the local areas around here are being asked to take to their boards to get approved. Our legal team, Ms. Lombard sent it to our legal team. They have reviewed it and see no issues with it whatsoever. Mr. Kennedy, I want to give him a lot of credit. He is our director for college and career and grants. He did a lot of work spearheading this and advocacy to make sure that both sides, the community college side as well as Huntley were represented very well in this agreement. So it was a lot of his own work over the last year to kind of get to where we are. They have a couple of areas they want to continue tweaking because the first round of a really in-depth one is never perfect, right? So I'm sure next year we'll have a couple of changes to this, but we're bringing it this evening for approval and hoping that you'll recommend that.
That's great. And as part of this process, is this something that is packed within the high school transcript that follows student or is this something outside of the transcript that a student has to request and bring to participating?
It's, it's a little bit of both. So we do indicate the course on our transcript that says dual credit culinary arts or dual credit low impact fitness, whatever it might be. But then MCC also does offer a transcript as well that they can take with them. So our transcript and their transcript will indicate that.
Okay. So if I can ask a couple of questions? So I guess first, maybe I misheard you. Did you say $25 a credit?
Yeah, so right, right now it's $25 a course, so it's for the free.
Okay, because I, I've had two kids in college and it's a lot more than that.
Correct. It's a great, it's a great conversation for families.
And I, I think we have the ability to move to an associate's degree by the time you graduate high school. Do we have that capability?
We do. That's our dual degree program and so we're just going to be year two of that this current year. We had, Ms. Lombard, Mr. Kennedy told us on our last thing, about 15 or 16 students was last year who qualified for that and next year we have about 12. on our thing, like, oh, 15 or 16 students was last year who qualified for that, and next year we have about 22 or 24 enrolled in that for this school year.
Yeah, and I'm just doing that to highlight, this is an outstanding thing for our, our high school. Um, and then the, the second question, um, which may be unrelated to the actual motion that'll be here, uh, but to encourage staff, do they, do they get a stipend if they're teaching dual credit, is there, is there some other extra, anything like that that they get?
Not currently, um, what we, right, currently we offer is with the grants that we partnered with McKinnon County College, as well as our tuition reimbursement, they can take the courses to get qualified to do this, so there's not an additional stipend.
Okay.
As they, um, if they're able to move over on the power schedule, those credits go towards moving on the lane.
Okay.
So if they get more credit, they could qualify to move over on the lane.
I guess I'm just looking at a way, we want to incentivize, I think, this, uh, more so, and so we can make sure we have a full, uh, set of that, so, just a question.
Great. How many other, how many staff members do we have under this area?
I knew you would ask that. Um, so we have.
What is in the memo then? No, it's okay.
Um, well, it's, well, there are a couple of duplicates, I would say maybe 12 different staff members, that certain ones can teach multiple courses, examples, culinary arts, they can tell.
Right.
Um, but we have about 12 currently on this list, give or take plus minus two.
Okay. And, and how long does it, uh, is it just like one class or two classes to get this, quote unquote, micro, micro credential, if you will?
It depends on your transcript, so, um, for example, certain ones are easier, like social studies potentially, if you have a lot of those courses in all the different areas that we've all had to take, you might only have to take two classes, but then if it's a, um, math, like the statistics, if you came with a math degree, you might be closer, you know, or hopefully you'd be okay after your, but then if you were, it was just an endorsement you added on to your transcript, you might have more classes to take, so it's very just dependent on how the teacher did with their undergrad and master's that work, and it varies based on what their experience.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious to, to, to piggyback previous comment, if, if we're going to encourage expansion of this type of program, is, how much work is it to, to get there, and, and I guess it depends on the background, and that makes complete sense, um, but in some of these areas, uh, like if you had a physics offering, you have a physics teacher here, it would seem like a natural piggyback, but then depending on how much coursework in physics, and if they have that college physics background, they might actually exceed the, uh, the, the need.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because we have to meet both the MCC requirements and, you know, obviously we meet our own ISB requirements when they're teaching that, and so college professors have to have many more hours sometimes in that content area, like you said.
Right, and, and I've seen that when, when hiring, um, educators in the college ranks, uh, they often ask for somebody to have a degree higher than what they're teaching, so a master's level to teach an undergraduate class, or, uh, a doctorate in order to teach a master's level class, on something on that scale, so I, I could see where that could become a challenge, uh, in, in order to get there, so, um, kudos to the teachers that do have these credentials in place.
Mr. Troy, we met, uh, with it just yesterday, um, with two representatives from MCC, and so one of the things, I believe, again, what, what they're coming with, with their undergrad, um, I believe they need 18 hours in that content area, but again, they're specific courses, so those would all have to be audited. But, um, MCC did let us know yesterday that they have additional funds that, um, will be expiring soon, but that, uh, the way that they could take some of the courses there to get that, uh, they could probably get nine hours through, um, them with, uh, taking the classes there, as well as that being paid for, for them, so we're, uh, gonna put that push out there again, um, because as you see, we, there are some departments we don't have represented here at all, and we'd love to be able to do that, um, but again, we want to be able to support the, the teachers to be able to, to move forward with that.
Sure, and, and I look forward to the quantum mechanics being offered.
Um, to go along with, with what Mr. Bittman said, I, I just, I think that maybe with this new grant that we'll hopefully get, maybe we could look into maybe paying a stipend to teachers who are going to teach these courses, maybe we could get some early childhood or some special education courses going, um, because my kids also benefited from dual, dual credit classes, and it was a huge saving. Um, my oldest son went in with, at sophomore standing because of those, uh, courses that he took in high school, so it's a great program, and like, you know, Mr. Troy said, kudos to the teachers who are already doing this, and expanding this program would be great.
Good. Any other questions? Do I, motion, uh?
Yeah.
Oh, can I call for the motion?
Yeah, you can.
Wow. I don't have Mr. Quagley Adams sitting next to me to tell me what to do.
I appreciate all the help you get.
Uh, can I speak a motion for approval?
So move.
Second, so voice call, please.
Mr. Quagley Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Cretti.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
You're up next.
I am, or, or, well, it's still Dr. McKendall as well.
I'm ready.
What would you like to talk to, uh, Power School?
Yes, so this evening I do have, um, an approval for an integrated data warehouse, um, and that we would, that we want to bring for your attention this evening. I know we normally try using a lot of committee of a whole structure, so we present it, it reads a whole, and then you have a couple of weeks to then approve it. Sometimes they line up like this month where it's a one-month meeting and we still need to get something done to kind of move forward, so how this landed here. Um, before I go into what we're presenting for you, I just want to talk a little bit about how we look at the systems that we use internally, um, to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students, and that we're constantly seeking areas of improvement, um, and so what kind of came from this was we do a constant needs assessment, our tools are using meeting our needs, because we want to make sure that we're measuring the impact of the products that we use, both of our students and then internally to help our system, but then also the usage from our stakeholders, we don't want to have something that isn't being used by the right stakeholder group, because then that's a waste of our dollars, right, and time. We also are always looking at cost, um, costs of working fast, and we want to make sure that we're being as specifically responsible as possible with the tools that we bring before you. Um, efficiency is something that we look at as well, we want to make sure the tool that we have is, um, easy to use for all the different stakeholders, so that it's actually utilized, um, and then we're always looking at new products, um, I always joke that I feel like I'm looking two to three years down the road at what's coming now, so that then we can decide, is what we're using the best thing for us? Um, and so that's kind of what led into looking at this integrated data warehouse. We currently have a product that we use called Otis, um, we shifted that about five years ago, um, it was kind of a last-minute shift because, um, the product that we were using, which was owned by Power School, which is our student information system, was sunsetted at last minute. And so we quickly had to figure out what could we use to be the data warehouse and assessment platform for our district, and at the time, um, Power School didn't have a product that could replace it, so we had to go to an outside, um, product. It did meet our needs for a while, it helped us through the pandemic for our, um, remote learning, especially for our elementary students, for the LMS, for them to access their learning, um, it does provide us a way for our teachers and, um, parents currently, if they log into the system, yes, they log in, to look at all the data, and that's part of the usability piece to it, um, but right now we feel that we've outgrown it, we need to be looking at something new, and, um, in the meantime, Power School has created, um, or has acquired a product that's been around for about 23 years. Power School acquired it four years ago, of course, the year after we had to leave the product they had, um, and so we are looking to, um, shift our usage from Otis to adopt the Power School Unified Insights. So the purpose of a data warehouse is it allows all of our staff, um, currently, um, to utilize and centralize all of our sources of data, so this pulls in everything, our local assessment data, which is our STAR assessment names of assessment, it pulls in our state assessment data, um, it also pulls in, um, anything else that we might see, that our best social, emotional, and learning screener, and it allows us to take a look at everything that we have in a comprehensive way to hopefully, um, inform our decision-making and what we're doing for our students. So why do we want this? Um, we want to make decisions based off of data, we don't want to just make decisions because we think it looks best, we want to make sure that we're able to target and support our students in the best way possible, um, and we want that data to be actionable, so that we're driving improvements and that we can enhance our student outcomes, and we want to do that in the best way possible. So this was just a little image I put together just to help show kind of the process we went through for this, um, reviewing this product. Step one's in the top right, but we identified all of the stakeholder different needs of why we would want to use a data warehouse, um, product. We did a lot of research and exploration over the last two years, seeing what are the different things that are out there, um, we evaluated, compared, and we did not pilot this one, because, um, a pilot would require you to purchase it and try it, and maybe you couldn't do it in between. Um, we did work with our, um, technology team to really dive deeply into the options that they have, um, but we, we did do that process, and then the next step would be developing a plan collaboratively with stakeholders on how to use it, do it in implement and, um, and provide professional learning, and then we want to review, listen to feedback, and start that process over, so we do follow that consistently when we're looking at tools. Uh, so the, uh, product we have put in front of you is Unified Insights, which is, um, the piece that they have is Student Essentials. Unified Insights, again, is a Power School product, it's a big umbrella, and then they have lots of pieces you could buy to help, um, supplement or support different needs, so we're just looking at the Student Essentials piece, um, currently. And what it does is it is, um, it does allow us to pull information from Schoology, which is our LMS that our 612, um, staff use currently, um, as well as our Power School student information system, so that would be grades, um, all of our attendance data, our behavior data, as we're saying into one spot, as well as I've shared the local, national, and state assessments, um, we have to feed that information to them and, you know, share it, but then they would upload all that into one spot for us. Um, it does allow us to have that complete picture of our schools, our classrooms, our students, um, and again, the idea is to have that fashionable data that we can drive improvement and help, um, support our students as best that we can. The academics piece, um, we're very excited to be able to pull grades and, um, eventually potentially some assessments into this, to be able to, um, triangulate data and say if a student's achieving this on the STAR assessment, this on the SAT, and then this grade in the class, what's happening, um, drilling into it to be able to help decide how specifically, how we can specifically help and support our students to grow. Attendance, I mentioned, you're able to see that in, so as our teacher, our staff are ready consistently, um, they put their attendance into Power School, we would be able to drill and even say, for students who have a C in science and they were good, what's their attendance percentage, you know, and we could even look at that level, because you're able to really dig into data from that angle as well, which sometimes that's important to know, especially if we're looking at chronic, um, our truancy rates are, trying to support our students in that MTSS one. I mentioned we could bring in behavior, so we have, um, Ms. Lombard has helped support, um, our buildings to start to, um, put our behavior into incident management. This will take the incidents that are loaded in, when we put it in, in a clean way, and be able to look at things and be able to say, are, what are the behaviors in the impact, and be able to quickly see what might be happening, um, in the classroom, and also on those state and local assessments. Enrollment data, um, I'm excited about this one, um, it does show us, um, I'm excited about all of it, because I like this stuff, but this one, you are able to drill on even to neighborhoods, to kind of see, maybe we're saying, where are our students, um, you know, our, maybe our low economic area, where, what's the heat map, where are we kind of seeing some lower, uh, distance scores, or they're not making their expected growth? You can kind of look there to help see, do we need to target some of our after-school supports more towards certain areas? Do we need to provide maybe transportation in different parts, here we can start to drill in, um, into some of that, and so I think that will be helpful as well. And then, um, student profiles, um, you'll be able to pull up just for one student, everything, all at one time, one quick glance, see the grades, and the attendance, and their scores, um, and, and do that. We can do this now with Otis, but it doesn't see grades or attendance or behaviors or any of those pieces then, um, but this, we're excited to be able to see that quickly and easily, um, as we are supporting our students through NTSS meetings or, um, IEP process, and just having this data at our fingertips. Um, from the building admin perspective, um, and also eventually our teacher teams will be able to use it in our school improvement planning processes, so then as they're setting their goals of this whole, at the building level, to support our strategic plan goals, they can see and monitor, um, the progress and the growth. Um, we can set, um, custom, I guess, um, dashboard, I'm trying to think of that word, a dashboard based off of user type, and be able to say, pull up this data right when you log in, you can easily see, are these kids, um, you know, where they are, and be able to do that without having to go through a spreadsheet and handwrite it and sort it and do all those different pieces, which I think will help our teachers with, um, efficiency and time eventually. Um, and then, they, you know, we bring up always that equity piece to things, when we talk about equity, it's that we're looking at all kids, not providing things for all kids no matter what, right, that we're able to provide that at the end of the day, and so we'll be able to kind of see that and make sure that we can, um, look at all the different demographics that we might have, um, and that we're meeting their needs in a, in an easy way. So our tentative implementation plan, um, would be that we'd be onboarding this, it's approved this school year, um, this is a three to six month process to, um, to start a product like this, because there's just a lot of work in cleaning up the data and setting it the right way, and so this school year would really be the onboarding of it, it'd be a lot of time for professional learning for admin on how we can do this, we don't want to put something in front of our staff without creating a plan and processes, so that they actually, everyone sees it valuable, and so we would take that time to build that. Um, we would start to think how we could utilize this in our school improvement processes, and, um, with our new director of, um, curriculum overseeing data assessment and MTSS, um, she'd be working on how we can integrate this into our current MTSS processes to make it easier and more efficient for people to be able to access and see the data. They also have some parent access capabilities coming, um, soon, they said, so we want to explore some of that, because we think our families would want to be able to see some of this data and kind of, and we would want to figure out what we want them to see, and so that kind of all takes time. Our plan would, um, not be to even utilize it with staff until '24, '25, because again, that's about three districts month onboarding, we take the time to build it, and then next summer, we work to kind of just make it a part of our current process, so it's not something too new. Um, we are confident, Dr. Rizemski, in that it's a Power School product, and so hopefully because of that, it's a easy click, as we're used to going in here, there's another thing to click, but, you know, it always changes, what'd you say, Ms. Lombard, change can be.
Changes come.
And is constant, but it can be exciting and helpful as well, thank you. Um, and then the next year we'd be wanting to look at this and make sure it's working and, um, maybe we'll can always gather feedback. Um, from the budget perspective, we do have dollars already allocated internally to use Otis, so this would just be shifting dollars from Otis to this product. Um, the first year you can see it is a higher cost, because there is an onboarding implementation fee that you always have to have, um, they did give us a deal, because we are a Power School student, I put, or not student, customer, sorry, but deal, um, and then you can see in year two and three, they kick away that onboarding cost. Um, so we have the money already allocated to cover this, um, already, so it's not additional dollars needed, um, they have a couple, as I mentioned, this is just one aspect of what they have to offer, there's a couple of our pieces we're interested in, eventually if this works, which we would then need to talk through how I was budget, you know, and make sure I do it within what I, um, am allocated currently, um, but right now, um, we feel very confident with what we have here. So with that, I'm, you have a question?
That's great, I, I, um, I'm a data guy, so I love being able to, to look at things like this, and so you spoke kind of, uh, about having a macro view of everything holistically for, for the district, and that kind of goes down tier by tier into, you know, instructor level, principal level, and everything like, like that. Um, do you know if there's a feature where, uh, since there's obviously other schools, uh, districts utilizing this, could we compare both the macro and micro to an aggregate, aggregate level for other districts in the area, uh, to, to see that kind of snapshot?
That's a great question, I think your answer will be, I will ask it, I think their answer will be no, because we have to have a data sharing agreement of some sort, but we could, we could definitely, I understand the question.
Yeah, it wouldn't be granular, it would just be, on, on a higher level, yeah, to, to be able to see that. Uh, second, is there, um, is there some kind of financial overlay, so we could truly get a spend per student, uh, capture on, on this? Where, you know, we, we constantly talk about how much we're spending per, per student, and in what areas, and how we could see that impact for, for our students?
It's $4.95.
Yeah. I'm saying, I know it's between, yeah, it's 400, it's under $5, I think, with that amount.
Oh, I, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is.
Yeah, there's probably other, it's the raw cost of that.
I think he's capturing the overall, how much we're spending.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, in our, in our efforts, uh, and what we invest in our district, and whether it's special programs, whether it's, it's the things like we were, we were talking about with special ed.
Absolutely.
Um, and, and see the impact of our investments, is what I'm saying.
We can gather that, we started working, uh, Mr. Altmaier had us working on a zero-based budget, this, uh, brain to help kind of guide that, and so we did a lot of work on what are, basically was everything a student is getting, you know, math, curriculum, literacy, et cetera, we're still working on that, because there are other little pieces in there, but we could definitely.
That's great.
Work to get that.
Good. Thank you, Dr. McKendall.
I just, I just have a comment, that we, we use something similar, um, with, with this, and the nice thing about it is that we could put the IEP at a glance, or the 504 plan, and so the teachers have access to all of that information, and it's really nice, and it's a time saver. I will say, switching over to a new data warehouse program takes a long time, and it's hard on staff to kind of learn the new process, and, uh, at least we use Power School SIS, and it, it's a learning curve, so deep-paced. So deep-paced staff, because, oh boy, yeah, it's something else. So, yeah, but the, the end result is, is really good.
I think that's why we wanted to bring it now, was we have the time to do that while we're living kind of in, you know, two worlds a little bit. So it's not an immediate impact that we can spend my time, but I definitely agree.
I have a question. On the one page you referenced, you know, the heat map, you said, I don't know what page that was. But you said you could look at a glance of, like, the grades, schedule, all, just real quick. And the behavioral notes and whatnot and the FDL and whatnot. Now, would the teacher get to see all that? Is that what that is?
They will.
Is that different than what happens now?
Right now, they can see, they can see all of that in different parts of Power School. You know, if you go into the behavior part, if they loaded it in as a login, they can see what, what happened to that child. They can also see attendance for a child if they put that in. This takes it on one spot, so you're not looking at numerous different clicks and opening different, you know, systems to do it. It also makes it, because of that, to be honest, it's hard, some people don't want to go do all that work to kind of look at all that. So this kind of helps remove some of that barrier.
Just, I, I think in my mind, I've heard just random comments from teachers and whatnot that the file of a student sometimes is blocked for behaviors. So not being able to see, like, she's going from sixth grade to seventh grade and the new seventh grade teachers don't know, like, some behavioral issues to be alerted of or be aware of. And then, but if they did know that, I don't know. I, I was just thinking in my head, like, is that something that is different?
Yeah, we could, we could work with, I'll, I'll, I'll work with Lombard on this. But we could definitely talk about with incident management, being able to load that in.
Is that different than this?
It's, it's, part of Power School sees it all though in one spot. So if we enable it to be able to see, you can
So that could be something, yeah. Okay.
I thought that would be helpful, that issue of the
Yeah, so teachers are prepared more for discipline issues and that, thanks.
I'd like to pick up, Laura was on that. So if you're in a pod in middle school as a teacher, my belief is that you share discipline data amongst the different teachers to figure out, you know, what's going on? If you have a student who might be getting in a little trouble or something going on and that, does this help with that?
Yeah, it absolutely could because you'd be able to see it in one spot. You could also, the way we set it up on the backend, you could say, let's see all the students we share as a cluster. You know, you can kind of look at it that way. You can even, I couldn't show you this because I didn't want to get too in the weeds. You might have liked this, then I can say you're a data person. You can create your own group and you can even track them and share those groups with other people. So we know that there's a group of students who are struggling with X, Y, Z. I create that and when I pull on, I can just look at everything for that group. And a teacher can decide what that is or a building admin can set that. We can also set some flags or warning labels or systems or cut scores on things. So for example, chronic absenteeism, we want to focus on, want to make sure that our students are here at school. Because if they're not here at school, the learning is not occurring, right, as much. So we want to, we can even set some cut scores on that to say, when a student has seven absences, trigger, or five, we'll do, we said it with you earlier, but five or three, however many is, absences, trigger that to pull up on my, you know, an admin dashboard and also a teacher's dashboard or a team, depending on their role, to then be able to look and easily see who are those, those kids that we need to go check in on in a way without. Right now, a lot of it's manual. I mean, Dr. Visenzi pulled a spreadsheet for us. How often do you do that? Every month and it kind of, he does it, flags, it does all in the backend. And then this will just do it with just a quick, once the programming is done, a quick, you know, claim.
And just to be clear, it is the, the administration's policy that it's good for teachers to share kind of behavior data amongst each other within a pod. And that's generally the policy. We, we don't, we want the teachers to know what's going on if it's another classroom.
Right, I think that you use the example of middle school. So if that, that team is there and they're having those discussions, if Jessica is misbehaving or she's having this in this class, but none of the others, it's going to really help to be able to say, okay, what might be causing this? Is it the subject matter, is it this? Are there consistent patterns? Is there going to be great information for us to do as we look at interventions, length of information, all of that data? And so, yeah, is it a need to know that somebody on another grade level on another team? Nope, but that team should have that discussion. It's attendance, it's discipline, it's academics, it's all of those things because that, that creates a whole child and they all share each other's students, so.
Okay, that's good to hear because I've, I've heard a couple of spotty things that kind of indicate it might be going in a different direction. So we can talk about that offline, but just, that's why I'm asking the question. The, the second is financial. So we're invested pretty well into Power School, right? I think most people like that. This is an additional feature. You, you said something that I can't get out of my head, which is, we had their data warehouse product and they sunset it. And now they've got a nice new shiny product and they want to sell it to us. But yet they're going to charge us for the year that we're just going to set it up. I, I'm not sure we should accept that. I, I think we should go back and have them sharpen their pencil a little bit because it sounds like they, to lack of better terms, screwed us before COVID and took away their products. So we had to jump through something. And if they really want to be a partner with us, I, I think they should sharpen their pencil a little bit. Because that doesn't seem like a good business practice to, to take away something like this. I don't know if you have any comments about that? I don't mean to
Yeah, I know, good.
You're, you're working with them and I appreciate the product.
We pushed hard, we pushed hard on the price. The cost and you see were significant. I would say, and Dr. Visenzi, the first initial quotes were usually half more than this, like fifty percent or something. And we got them, uh huh, so we were able to get them down for similar reasons, also the fact that we're partners with them. I don't know, do you have to just the implementation costs for most products?
Yeah, and a lot of what happens in this initially here is, is the cost of building the system for us, just where that implementation cost from. I want to go back to the initial question though about, about the product that was sunsetted. If I remember right, that may have been a product that Power School brought with them from a previous ownership. It, that I believe is why they sunset the product, not because they had a product that wasn't working. Brought a product with them and it wasn't dysfunctional as it could have been. And the timing of that, I think, was really unfortunate. I absolutely understated. Things right, the initial quotes came in, I want to say it's about fifty percent higher than what we're seeing now in the finals. We could potentially push on that some more.
What do we pay for Otis?
It's about seventy-nine thousand.
This is the discount?
It's a discount again.
Can I add to your question a little bit? I think it, it sounds like a great program. My, my question always, and speaking with the theme of change is always going to happen. And I think we have sixty new staff members. What happens to those sixty next year and the sixty the following year when training is only in the first year? Because I, I would feel like it's always only as good as you train them.
Well, the training's probably not even going to be for them, the training's free. It's
Yeah, the training's for us.
Okay, okay. And that is going to be my question after it. So then what happens? You get to get trained, okay, you still only know it so well, they know it a lot better. And then what happens when we start to train the rank?
There's a couple of things that can happen there. Obviously, we can get training from the district level, but our new teachers also have mentors for the entire year. So they would have a new teacher that would be with them, they could assist with that.
And we also will build us into our onboarding process for new teachers. We would include it as a part of our professional learning plan for the year. We'd make sure this was an important part of that and do it in some processes. And so we wouldn't let it all, we would hope, we would try to not let it all drop on that. But I appreciate that question.
So again, having good data, always great. It's the utilization and discipline to, you know, who's going to be looking at it? And what's, have we already determined what the regiment should be or the recommendations to staffing? Is to how, how to utilize it? Have they all been fleshed out already or is that going to be a work process here when you, when you get to get trained at?
It would be a little bit of both. We would want to, we have ideas exactly of how to plug this into systems we have already. So our school improvement process, our MTSS data meeting, our, we would also include it as a part of our, you know, pods, miniature pods, those pod meetings, we would develop some protocols to help follow and support that. But then as we get to know how we can use this, we would be able to expand that usage, obviously, because we think that there's a lot more we could do with it beyond what we even know right now.
Right, I just want to harness this to expose, you know, and that we have a plan to be able to do it. Lastly, so on the, the training pieces and the costs associated with it, the hours and the dollar amount, or especially on the implementation services, they pretty hefty per hourly rate based on the hours. You have been fifty on the one, seventy, seventy hours on that twenty-seven, two fifty-nine, it's like four hundred bucks an hour, yeah.
It'd be a great if you can get it.
But that, that part of it, I, I don't, you know, the one that's four ninety-five a student, that doesn't bother me at all. I'm just wondering, that rate seems a little rich to me. I don't know what you guys' experiences on it, but I don't know. Again, you guys talked to them, so I don't know.
It's, it's, I'm going to say it's hard to say because we, we don't, we don't get to see behind the curtain on how a company like Power School builds that price. Like I said, let me put my other hat on for a minute in the technology space. For us to hire any sort of training or consultancy for the technical side of things, it's going to be the same price.
Okay, so that's, so that's okay. Then are these sufficient hours to cover this or are we going to get billed beyond this at that rate? This is the last question I have.
The rate, the hours that they gave us are because we are a Power School product already. So a lot of the backend work will be done because we already have the majority of our data through this school information system. It's going to be cleaning it up and making sure we're sending all the other information that way, as well as some of the dashboards that I was talking about. And so I do know that they gave us a, a decreased amount for that because we are a Power School product already.
Okay, so the only other, I didn't see, three times. It was, I don't know that I saw any additional hourly rate, didn't, the contract beyond the stated hours. So I don't know how those possibly might get, could be wrong, I might not have read the contract correctly. But do we, do we know if we have to go beyond these hours and need more of their time? Do that basically the same rate?
I did not ask that question. I'm happy to go back to the information.
Dr. Visenzi? Power School does have training packages as a company for all of their products. So anytime that we did need to go to them and have additional hours, they have packages of hours that we've, we've done before. There's instances, depending on what the product is, what the training was, like we said, custom, reasons for that before for training, they've always been able to provide it, we needed additional.
Right.
And they, they basically go into, to a project design phase and build that out at that time.
Okay.
It's probably been four or five years since we've done one of those. Because we don't like the consultancy either, which is why we try to avoid the, especially in technology. Because we don't want to, we'd rather learn the services ourselves whenever we can.
Right.
Working toward implementation, we didn't want to chant that because we have no experts yet.
Right, okay.
Dr. Visenzi, when you think about that, I know this is the new product. But when you think about Otis, we've had, Otis, branch, you mind some of those other things? We've had technology things with transportation. How often have we had to go back to a company to add additional? Or they, typically they are able to do it within the framework of what they put together for the, the contract?
In my time here, I can only think of a couple of times when we've had to do that. And, and part of that is because there's been some instances where we've even changed the scope along the way because we learned that it could do something. Since we wanted upfront, but then we did, we've changed course maybe a couple of times. There's been other times where, where we've had companies during implementation say, you know, this is taking longer than we thought. And our first response, a lot of times is, nothing new.
Yeah, too bad.
You're the one that put the timeline together. So we, we've helped several companies reach the fire on those sorts of things. They're, they're complex conversations, but conversations that we've ever really shy away from.
I have one other comment, and I know that you're mindful of this. But just speaking on behalf of the staff, you know, this is a big deal. This is one more thing on their plate. I would just hope that either plans to implement any other big things coming, you know, like I said before, it's a big learning curve to learn a new data management system and all of that. Just, just a comment to just be mindful of that and, like I said, give grace to staff because this is the one more, one more thing, you know, on their, on their plate once they're already probably overloaded, so.
Absolutely, that went into our thoughts behind the rollout and when we were going to try to do it through our processes, we were thinking of using existing processes to replace the use of this with versus something new for that exact reason. Because we're very cognizant of that and
I knew you were.
Yeah, we want to, I appreciate that.
It was all of the considerations in, in what wanted us to look thoroughly at the Power School products. Because it's a product that matches the student information system that we already have that our staffs aren't comfortable with. So we didn't have to have a this and a that. It just, it should merge together much more seamlessly than what our existing products have. So we took, we took that at the benefit as well.
And I know that the benefits that way was going to happen, so I'm, I'm glad about that, but I just, I just
No, it sounds like a, a good product. I, I love the concept of it. I think the board will be able to, to ask questions to get a good report. But I, I have heard some concerns and I'm wondering, do we ask for a motion to pass this? Or do we wait until some of the questions, especially the financial ones, have, have been answered before moving it forward for a vote?
I mean, I guess from my perspective, I think tabling it would be probably a good thing. And I'm even more invested in that after Mr. Cogley, I'll just cover the four hundred dollar an hour per rate. That, that seems pretty high. And again, if we're a Power School user, I think they just need to sharpen their pencils more. And again, I, I agree with all the goodness that can come from the product. I just think they need to sharpen their pencils a little bit more, especially what they did to us before. So that's, that's my view.
Yeah, I, I would agree. And so, you know, if you, if you need resources from, from any of us or, or you have run into a brick wall with, with the company itself, please let us know. But I, I think we're close. I think we're close on this.
Okay, so just before you table it, I'm not opposed to doing that, but how does that upset your timeline?
So Dr. McCrystal, if we were to bring this back in August, we get some of these answers here in the next couple of weeks. So implementation full on, we're looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, right, with staff. So it'd be this school year, we wouldn't want it to go past based on that timeline of how long it would take to build it out, get the training for the core staff to be able to take it down that next year to the building level with that. So we wouldn't want to push this anywhere past August, September at the latest.
Right, so I was looking to bring this to the committee as a whole with the changes and push even harder on, you know, their rate. I completely understand. I think it also gives me a different bargaining
I was going to say
Our school was asking questions about, you know, so I can definitely use that in our back pocket. So I'd want to bring it to the committee as a whole and then hopefully we would prevent two weeks later. And we'd just be about a month behind on implementation.
Thank you and taking great due diligence out of this.
From a, from a, the technology perspective of that, it's, it'll be okay. What it does is trumpets the
They're not putting it together.
So it's good, it's going to shorten the timeframe for, for the building and everything. It's still a six-month process. We're still not talking about bumping into next school year. So, and truthfully, a fit to that is that we'll be past the start of the school year when we really need to move the ground running on a system like this. We won't be past all of the craziness of the start of the school year, but we'll be past the moment. So that's, that's a nice side, side benefit to this one.
Yeah, if you, if you put a Gantt chart together, you've got plenty of slack time on this from a project management standpoint. So what was your evaluation criteria in deciding on a three-year agreement for this?
So we were very careful in the contract. You can see that there are two out clauses. One, if the dollars aren't there, we can do that, as well as, as if they don't meet our expectations. There is that clause and their contract will be included from that. We have to follow some protocols. You know, we have to, we have to tell them informally in writing a certain date, then they have a certain number of days to respond, et cetera. But there are those clauses. But the most, the three-year is because you do get cost savings. So if not, then you're paying the, you know, a higher rate. And that's how they, they tell you that you're going to be able to do that. But we were very, we pushed hard to say, we want to make sure we have two ways to get out of it, you know, with the funds not being there or the other angle. And that's something they did as a contract with our negotiations.
Sure, and the out clauses, I understand that, that you should have that baked in, of course. What my concern is, is should this go longer or, because you're going to spend a third of the time of this contract building this.
What my concern is, is should this go longer or, because you're gonna spend a third of the time of this contract building this and then you're into year two and you're using it. So there's gonna be some bumps and bruises along the way because people are learning it and getting used to it. And by the time that period works itself through, you're looking at possibly renewing and now you're on to year three and, okay, we just got used to this and it's already a time, what do we do now? And then if it's, what have, you know, are we looking at a new thing? You've already had the sunk costs of all the upfront stuff. And does it make more sense to commit more time to it knowing you've got the out clauses? See if there's another financial benefit to that. It, it's just a timing thing of, by the time you get used to it, you're already looking at deciding whether you're gonna continue it. And at worst case, you say this is not for us and now you're looking at another sunk cost, but with cause because it might not be working the way you want it to. So it's just this weird three-year, a third of the time is spent building something that you're gonna be evaluating, in my opinion, soon after you get there. So I don't know if there's a provision that can be put in there where if there's a renewal period, if there, if there are savings involved in something like that. Just request an action for a fourth, pricing for an action for a fourth year.
I think, Dr. McCrystal, maybe one of the other things we could talk to them about is, obviously, since the technology is always changing, maybe some of the people are, they're looking at more that three-year makes sense rather than doing that longevity. But since it is a system that we're already using and if, maybe we can get a clause in there if there is a product that is enhanced or something else that we would like to look at that they're gonna offer in year four or five and maybe we could have some type of a clause that we could get, you know, the cost of what that program would be and it still aligns and syncs in, so we could talk to them together.
And I'm guessing that it sounds like they've developed this. So they're putting in more effort into maintaining and enhancing as opposed to the earlier version that they purchased or brought in with a different, different development team and then all of a sudden it didn't jive with what they were, they were, they were setting out as a company mission. So instead of enhancing and developing it further, they just said, okay, we're end of liking this and we're moving on to something else. So there's that kind of risk too.
Right, a little mix of that because the one that they acquired four years ago was one that has been around for about twenty years.
Okay.
And so they've done a lot of work on making it better to be more of a Powerschool line, fleet, you know, all that stuff to help it be something that they actually wanna do, which Dr. Pizinski's credit. That was before, I think I came when the sun setting of it all kind of started a little bit. But the other product, I don't think they could see the future of it being able to meet the needs of what they wanted to see behind this company. And so, and so getting rid of it, yeah.
Because that sword cuts both ways. We felt that on the front end or a previous revision of this, they still wanted to have to go through this whole thing all over again after this.
Moving both, right.
Right, and all the work that goes into teaching and learning and building and all of that stuff. The other question that I had, maybe it's not so much a question, but you can have all the data at your disposal and you have to have the people who are able to spend the time reading it and understanding it. Just to have numbers on a screen, that's great, but you've gotta be able to take that step forward. So I'm confident that we have those people in-house who not only look at numbers and see numbers, but understand how to interpret the numbers and find those, those answers that are embedded in the data.
Absolutely, so we just hired our director of curriculum approved tonight, hopefully on the content agenda, data assessment and the EFS. And so her responsibility would be onboarding and really helping support this product. And then our building admin are very lucky users to get into some data that they can have at their fingertips to be able to help support the students in the building. Some days, seeing and being a part of that, then we have our, you know, MTSF facilitators and teacher teams to help track that. But you're right, it's important to have that culture of data.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions?
I got a question, not money related. Does any of that info, I may have asked previously as far as behavior and whatnot, do any of the surveys that you guys send out get sent back to that? I'm curious where those go.
Yeah, great question. Right now, we use our other systems to try to do that, but I don't know how we would be, we can definitely look into it.
We asked, in some of our calls, we asked Powerschool about, if we had custom data, we would just refer to that as custom data, we'll come back to those surveys. We could work with them to build, just to get that data into a product like this. It's not going to be as seamless as some of these other systems that have automatic data connections. But they did say if we had whatever data it was that we wanted as long as we had the ability to match up the students with their data to make sure that it was applied to the right management systems, they could.
Yeah, I'm sure there's an API out there that could.
There is, there is, there's several. The question comes in, if, like, if we send out a survey, let's just say in Google form, that's not gonna tie the API to a system like this. But we have the raw data from that that we could import into a system like this, we just have to build the templates for it. They were very, they were very accustomed to doing that.
And is that something that is fairly easy to do or is that something that's an additional consulting cost?
When we asked them, they said it's, there's a learning curve to it, but people who are accustomed to working with data shouldn't struggle too much.
Okay.
They said it's pretty hot and request, once we're comfortable with the interface, they didn't seem to say that there would be any, any. Between a handful of us, even just around the table, we spent a lot of time working with data and find ways to make things like that work.
Thank you.
Because I was thinking, as far as like some of the emotional type surveys, I won't comment on my use on those, but as far as like if teachers are already inputting that, do they need to send a survey?
Right, those would, yes, that data, if we give it to them, they have more data to put it in on the same spot. Great question.
Right, okay. And I know that's a question for us to go there. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Just one thing, I mean, so I know, I know we're tabling this, I know you wanted it passed and approved. The data here, the presentation was very good. I think we just need to kind of question the cost a little bit and that's really just something we need to do. So we really appreciate the effort going into this. Thank you. Nick, this is my part. All right, so we will jump to fifteen point four buildings and grounds, Mr. Cogly.
I am fifteen dot four dot one change order number one of the contract with El Marshall for the roof replacement. Mr. Cogly, I'll turn it over to you for the highlights, please.
Okay, this particular change order is not like a lot different than any other project because when the process, I have to explain the process for the construction. They, when it starts, they have to take off the weatherproof membrane on the top. They have the fast insulation down and that's put a new membrane. They have to do this, they do this in sections and they do it all in the same day. In case we get rain overnight or excessive amount of dew, this moisture doesn't get at the insulation. And so that's why when we take the bids, we do get unit prices for insulation board replacement. And when, when they start their work in the morning and they tear off the old membrane in there and they notice that there's going to be wet insulation, we've had prior planning with our staff in theirs, that theirs to call my staff, the ONM staff members, so someone can go up there and witness that in fact, the number of boards that they, my, the staff in the ONM department reports in writing to the ONM office, how many pieces of what size, what thickness board has been found wet or moldy, if you will, and needs to be replaced and it's put into a tally and usually within about, before the next morning, I insert it into the spreadsheet that you'll see here and I send it to the contractor and get confirmation that they're on board with this. There's really, there's really no way to take this back to the board, you know, and get this, you know, things like this approved or you do the work or we wouldn't be unprotected on the roof level. And I just also wanted to assure, assure the board that there's no risk inside the building for the, for the roof mold. What has happened here, how we did not know there was this much moisture attack on the insulation is that there is a waterproof membrane on top of the metal deck. Then the insulation board was installed on top of that. Then the old weatherproof membrane, a first time in construction, is on top of that. It was a sheet of rubber, a PDM, and then it was gravel ballasted. We didn't have signs of leaks in the building, it was just sitting in the insulation because of that vapor barrier underneath. And there were no indications that this was going to be this significant. I do know that this roof warranty expired, it's a twenty-year warranty. The building was open in two thousand and two, so it expired one year after the warranty. It was year before the warranty, I mean. But one, actually, the warranty expired one year before we did work.
Right.
And knowing where we are, I just want you to know that next year, hopefully, we can find the money to do the last, the last bit of roof, which is gonna be about, this will give more much value than this. I've already asked the, my roofing consultant to go up there and do some analysis to see if there's moisture in that insulation so we can stand this in advance and not have this surprise. You know, when we had, usually when they're, we know about it because when you walk around up there, you'll see bubbles in the surface or you'll feel, feel the substrate unstable when you're walking around inspecting it. There were no indications that this was, that this was happening. But if you do look in the memo at the very bottom before the recommendation, there's a thing there, you can put your cursor on there and you can click and you can see the reports and you can see the insulation work. But back to my point about the mold, since that vapor barrier is at the bottom underneath the wet insulation and this insulation, that, that condition was not transmitted inside the building because it was sealed underneath. We did, to the point we didn't even know there was water in there for years. You happy to answer any more of the questions?
You answered the question that I had earlier was about how to, how to find this or why it wasn't discovered. So it was, it was like, that there were, there was no discoverable information to say that there was a problem.
I look back at the records over the years of this area, because we keep detailed records. Every time a roof leak is reported, there's a roof leak report form sent to me with a plan of, you know, part of the floor plan of the building marking exact location. The exhaust fan that's at the, the human put in the art room there was the old place and our maintenance staff was very competent. It was, it was the way that exhaust fan, it's where their shroud was constructed. But other than that, I mean, this is a lot more widespread than just that. It's never happened in to this extent as we've gone through the roof replacement program here in my years.
Right, we're through some of the roof replacements.
This is really, we're, this has been a long road we've been going down because we go through this life cycle, it's part of our building's security.
Right.
And, and we got, we just got one more little bit to go after this.
Right, so we don't have a clue of why this happened, right?
A rubber membrane roof system.
Right.
When it's, I've seen this happen before. When the rubber sheet is scarred in handling or construction, just to any minor extent, it's not like a cut fall away through, if there's a scar on the surface, over time, that rubber sheet oxidizes and gets a little more brittle and as it ages, it can, it can have little holes be created in it. In addition, when the district was building these buildings back in the day, it was probably near the end of the term of the normal inbo type of roofing, which was gravel, rocks on top of the rubber. And that's what was holding the rubber sheet on there so it wouldn't blow away in a windstorm. I've shied away from that for the last thirty-seven years.
Right.
And, and what we, the kind of roof we're going to have now does not have that. It's a liquid white coating on the surface, uniformly flat. And if there's any tear, we're gonna see it when we do our roofing inspections of the roof, which we do. I have our periodic inspections, I tell my staff at least once a month, somebody has to walk all of those building roofs, except, you know, we have, we delegate who's doing what. And, and I know Chris Oliver out there does do a good job of that. And there's just been no indication. Of course, in unsafe weather, we tell them, don't go up there in the winter. And there's only two roof sections in this whole school district by its matter of fall protection safety, we can't go up. And that is the shingled roof sections on top of Conley and the Haven because their roof pitch is four and twelve inch. And OSHA's very clear on the kind of program we have for safety, unless we have fall protection safety that about. And we don't really need that because if you do, if you take your time and you walk around the perimeter of that building, you can see, you can visually see the roof when we have a wind event like the wonderful one we had last week.
Right. Okay, and then, and this change order is with El Marshall Inc., correct?
That is correct.
Then I see Schroeder Expo and below on the signature line.
Oh my gosh.
The contractor lines.
They put the wrong form in there?
This is in the board package or? Just make sure you, I mean, he can line it out and change it.
There's, that's the other one.
I thought, I thought I got confused between change orders here.
So is that the right dollar amount then, it's just the vendor is wrong?
Well, the vendor says the way.
I'm trying to get in this wonderful board book software back to page one of the memo, see what's going on. I do know the copy that is in the folder for signature, if it's approved, has the contractor's signature on the right version, I believe. This.
Okay. And all we're saying is, I wanna make sure we're.
Oh, I, oh, it's the name, I see the name. Yes, it's the name. My goodness.
Which is why I asked if the dollar amount is correct. Is the whole sheet is incorrect or is it just the?
Well, at the top it does say Elmar, two Elmars.
Oh, right, it is Elmar.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just going somehow we've got the trouble solved down.
It should be, I did call the contractor because this sentence is extraordinary. I said, these unit prices are typically built for a situation where you have, I'm trying to, I can't get it, I can't get board book to open the page up. Oh, here we go.
Okay.
Eighty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars a recent.
It's a tally sheet that supports the amount.
Yeah, you know, it tallied eighty-six thousand and I called him and I said,
Right.
these unit prices when a person puts a bid together or for pound, pie, tin, fifteen sheets and you gotta drive to your shop, hit the boards and bring them back.
Right.
But the one day it was a hundred and sixty-six sheets, I said, you're making one trip to the yard, one trip back and so forth and so there should be a volume discount. He had every right to say no because the bid is the bid. But they, they, they were kind enough to offer that little discount, you see there, like six percent.
But I found my, is we just need to change and that's right.
Yeah, it's not bad, it's just the.
Put the motion over, reflect the correct vendor.
Yeah.
Right, any further questions?
Yeah, just a couple. What's our experience with El Marshall Inc.? Do they do the other roof replacements?
They did Leggie Elementary School one of the early years of our work and we didn't have a situation. That was at Leggie. Leggie does have flat work like this. They have a reputation or approved by the manufacturer for that kind of work. They, they did a fine job over there, we have had no problems with that.
Okay, so we used them before and there were no change notices like this?
Well, there were, there were, there's always a one or two boards or a few, but nothing like this.
So how do we know, you described a bunch of different things about how we didn't think it was there beforehand. How do we know that this wasn't caused by their workmanship as they were working on the roof?
The day they opened the roof, they, it was found that day.
Okay, that's just asking.
Every day, they all section, every day.
It all got muddled in my head, so.
They take the membrane off in that area that day. And like, it's like ten o'clock in the morning after they have it open and they have all the boards piled up that are bad. My guy's up there that morning looking at that pile with them.
And when did they start work?
The village ordinance is seven AM this day.
No, what day?
Oh, what did they start work? They actually, they actually started a few days before this, probably a week and a half or two. I could look in the reports for you if you give me a moment and tell you. Their regular field. They, I'm sorry, they did the upper gym and they only found a few boards. That was the very beginning, I believe, and that's the first day of, that's the first day in this report.
Because the contract date, twelve, fifteen, twenty-two.
That is.
They weren't working on the roof in December.
No, this is something that I will, this is something that, you know, I'm glad you asked this question. I've been doing this for a long time in the Chicago land area. And, and as the game goes, a lot of school districts bid work and it all has to be done in ten weeks, you know. And, and as the game goes, a lot of school districts bid work and it all has to be done in 10 weeks, you know? And so smarter con, smarter school districts, if they're bidding out early, so that all the good contractors who are looking to fill their book of work are out there looking for work and they're providing aggressive numbers, they want to fill their book of work. If you're one of the school districts in Chicago land area that's waiting says, ah, I can bid my roof replacement in April. Number one, the good contractor's book of work is full. And number two, if you want them to be interested in you, you're going to pay a premium because they're going to, I, I was a contractor for 10 years. And when you're a contractor and your, your book of work is overfull, they're not productive, you're losing money, and therefore you have to put up your profit margin to be in the same place you were before.
So in, in this instance, they opened, when they opened the roof and they discovered the problem, they reported it to your staff the same day?
It was, yeah, but then, when they started opening up and they find one wet board, that morning, they called my, my staff and tell my staff, you need to be up here, you know, I'm going to have them all opened up in this area, which turned up today in about an hour and a half. Better be up here.
Does your question, because your.
No, my, the crux of my question is, why am I seeing this in July instead of June? If they saw it the first day, because they probably started working in early June.
This work was done after, it was, I started after the board meeting in June and then we did not have a committee of the whole.
Okay, that's why I was.
I think it would, yeah.
It was, it seems like we would have started this right after school.
At the first.
And we would have had that information earlier.
Well, as you see, it took them from 6:15 to 7:13 to do this work. Okay, and 6:15 was a little late to make it on the agenda in June, I believe.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, hearing no questions, I move to accept the change order number one for the contract with El Marshall Incorporated regarding the Huntley High School Roof Replacement Phase Four Project for the amount of eighty-one thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars, excuse me, five twenty-four dot thirty-two cents.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen dot four dot two, change order number one with regard to Schroeder asphalt in the bus lot expansion project. Mr. Rukasik again, please.
This one here, if I may try to, to keep, to keep the summary of what was changing here simple. The credits, the credits are due to the fact that we do, we do do soil borings of the area when we're planning the design development of asphalt replacement project. And he gives us a sampling of the soil conditions and the gravel base conditions. But until the, so the design is based on a grid pattern of soil borings. And we get, we do get extensive unit prices on these projects. But when you do rip the top asphalt off, the geotechnical engineer is called back and he looks at the exposed area and can do better surveillance of the condition of the subgrade and determine that the amount of Portland cement to be moved in the asphalt into the gravel base, I mean, is, is warranted as in the specifications, which was 60 pounds of, and instead, he determined it was less. So there's some notable credits shown here that you will see where the, that's because of the reduction in amount of Portland cement needed. Combine that with the fact then that there's some other credits given for the fact that when they took, they, they open up new areas, they take a loaded dump truck and they drive on it and that's the, what they call the proof roll, where the geotechnical engineer stands there and they look and determine if they need to put some, what they call geo grid, like a mat under there to support the gravel base, so it doesn't just push right through the, on the very non-supported plate. So there's some minor credits there. We had some, we had some conflicts, then the next thing you'll see in the ads there is some storm sewer work and, and some, some, some fill material adjustments for the conditions discovered there. That's the PGE one, it's called AM60. But then we had to move some storm sewers around because the, the electrical infrastructure that was installed for the charger pads, the positioning of the conduits that the contractor chose was not real conducive to building the island around the pads by these contractors. They in fact actually hit some of the conduits and the electrical infrastructure contractor came back and fixed it and no charge. But we had to move the, we had to move some of the storm sewer structures around to avoid that electrical infrastructure. And that's what you see with those ads on that COR one page, which is page three, I think, of the documents you have. Then if you go to the page COR two, what we had discovered is that when the buses were finally delivered, the spacing, positioning of the chargers, the, the level three charger plug-in point at the angle that we designed for the footprint of the expansion of the lot, that, that layout, that the actual charger wouldn't reach from the, the actual plug-in would not reach the bus charger point because it was chosen by the people that purchased the buses to put the charger on the side of the bus. There's, there's three options, I think, one was the front, the back and the side, and they chose the side. And so we had to, we had to make the angle of the bus parking more aggressive, which increased the footprint of the asphalt needed to make it all work. And that's what you see on COR two. And these, and all these prices were scrutinized by our civil engineer, H.R. Green, and the quantities were verified and seen and all, and all seen reasonable.
So, but didn't H.R. Green help design it? Right?
It was, it was an interaction between H.R. Green and Veragey and, and us buying the buses, there's three parties involved there.
Right.
And, and this is how, this is how it ended up.
So why are we responsible for their mistake, is my question, I guess.
Well, if it would have all been done with one contractor, we could blame one contractor, but I, I, you know, we, we bought the buses. So that's the length of the, the distance needed to plug it in. The chargers came from Veragey and the asphalt design came, came from H.R. Green. And, and the three components didn't, didn't gel very well on that one.
So can we go back to them and, and get some money back? I mean, this, this was not our, our doing and.
I, I don't think we told H.R. Green what the length of the cord was for the charger to lay it out. And as a matter of fact, actually, now this is all coming back, this has been going on for years, this whole project. I will tell you that a traffic engineer from Himley Horn, who did our traffic design elsewhere over the years, they did the layout. And H.R. Green basically took the layout and, and, and put it, put it on paper with engineering, the, the actual design of, what was it, so.
Just to clarify, are the level three chargers shorter cables?
Oh, much, much shorter.
Because there's a higher amperage on them?
That's exactly why. Yeah, we would need about four more feet minimum to even make it have a stretch.
All right, any further questions? All right, not hearing any questions. I will move to accept change order number one with regards to Schroeder asphalt for the bus lot expansion project, 2220, 22 dash one A, to the amount of $3,309.80. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes, but it's only because of the credits.
Mrs. Murray?
Yep.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Nope.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Two, like two.
I, I only heard one no.
Right, there's two no's, right?
Only one no. I heard one.
I'm, I'm with you with the credits, that, that pushed me over.
Moving on, fifteen dot five.
All right, thank you, Mr. Craddy.
All right, fifteen point five one, H.R. Personnel update, Dr. Zier, anything to add?
I don't have anything to add.
Any questions?
No questions, just real quick comments and the resignation, Dr. Vazinsky. I want to thank you for all the time and effort you've put for us towards the district. You've been highly dedicated, hardworking. You need to move the district forward in our technology area and we appreciate your efforts very much and we wish you good luck in the future. Say that to you.
My pleasure.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, I will make a motion to accept the H.R. Personnel report. To approve, sorry.
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Hey, roll call.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yep.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries on to fifteen point six, Finance Committee, Mr. Quagliano.
Fifteen point six, our payable, we have our purchase orders, accounts payable, impressed items of disbursement listed. Is there any questions related to those items? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase orders, accounts payable, impressed, issued in disbursement as presented in the agenda, is there a second? Second, second from Mr. Craddy, roll call.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yep.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
I'll point out that it took us less than 30 seconds to deal with $25 million, so we spent 45 minutes. $10,000, I don't, before, but it's the same, okay? We'll move on to fifteen point six point two, fiscal year 24 budget hearing, Mr. Al.
Yeah, the, the next several items are, are items that come up standard operating procedure every July. And this one is they have a budget hearing on September 21st, 2023, as we are required to file the budget with the state of Illinois by the end of September. So we are proposing the budget hearing take place at the September board meeting. And so this is a recommendation to do that. And it does provide a little background as well, but that, that is the gist of this approval. And it's part of this approval as well, it is important to note for some of the new board members, it's a requirement as well, it's required that we put a budget on display 30 days in advance of the budget hearing. It does not necessarily have to be the exact same budget that we pass because during the month of June, July, August and up until the day that we do ultimately approve that budget, there are a lot of changes coming down the pipeline. A lot of information from the state of Illinois that, as we talked during last month's budget, budget discussion, a lot of information is still unknown from the transportation reimbursement to other state reimbursements, to the evidence-based funding reimbursement. We may tweak certain line items based on the certain needs of the district, based on trended estimates. Maybe, you know, contract services is an example. So those, those items will change all the way through the date of, or the week before the budget hearing. So anyway, this is just simply a recommendation to schedule the budget hearing on September 21st. Thank you.
Questions related to that? I'll make a motion to approve the school year 24 budget hearing. It is presented in the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy, roll call, please.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Passes fifteen point six point three, hazardous bussing resolution, Mr. Al.
Okay, thank you very much. This is also something we do on an annual basis, as you may or may not know, where we are considered a hazardous bussing designation because while we don't have sidewalks on our campuses and it's very dangerous for our kids to walk to school. And the benefit there is while we are allowed to transport every single one of our students within the district and by doing so, we also get the transportation reimbursement from the state of Illinois. So as part of the annual process, it's required that we file a resolution satisfying compliance with the school code, passing a resolution that we are still in compliance with or eligible for the hazardous bussing designation. So this is a hazardous bussing, I'm a stranger today, designation that the board simply needs to approve moving forward.
Is there any questions to know that you guys may be familiar with rules and that type of stuff? But it's, it's something we've done pretty much. Any questions? Make a motion to approve the I dot hazardous bussing resolution as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Gallagher, second from Gallagher, roll call, please.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes. Motion passes fifteen point six point four, National School Lunch Rate Increase. Roll call, Mary.
Thank, thank you very much.
Lunch money, is that what you're going?
This is a type A lunch rate. Typically, we do do this every year, but during the COVID years, we did not because all of our students were, while receiving free lunches. But under the National School Lunch Program and part of their federal regulations, because we're part of the National School Lunch Program, it requires that pricing for full-priced student meals must begin, move towards matching the federal net reimbursement free lunch rate. And there's a calculation of that rate and that rate currently is $3.56. On an annual basis, under this code, we're supposed to increase our lunch rate by 10 cents each and every year until, well, we can match that, that free, net free lunch rate of $3.56. So we're proposing a 15 cent increase, although the minimum could be 10. And we're proposing a 15 percent, 15 cent increase, simply because over the last few years, food prices, especially with the supply chain and everything else happening, have been significantly going up. We were also just to benchmark ourselves for our type A lunch rate versus other local districts. We're currently at 310. Last year, Woodstock was at 345 and 335 for the high school and elementary. They're one of the few that actually had two rates between the two. Crystal Lake was at 325 while we were at 310. Barrington was at 325. District 300 was also aligned with us at 310. And I'm not sure what any of these districts, but they're all required to at least increase the rate 10 cents this year. So those were last year rates. So with that, we're simply making the recommendation to increase our type A lunch rate from 310 to 325. If you don't know what a type A lunch is, I'm, I'm going to bring you out to the school, we'll serve some lunches and it's actually a really good deal for the kids, you know, a milk, two fruits and a, and a meal. All for $3.10, so from now, $3.25, it is actually a really good deal.
So, so one of the food service people, I think in Heinemann, hosts the fixtures of the lunch and Mr. Quagliano kind of said, I wouldn't want them, they actually look pretty good, at least from the pictures. So I think they do, they do a pretty good job on.
I've eaten many of them. And now, you're a picky eater. I'm a picky eater. But I'm not a picky eater. Tony is like a chef.
Can't you tell him a picky eater is?
Yeah, Tony is like a chef, so, understand. Other than.
Frozen pizza, yeah.
Other than the same Costco hot dog, I don't know where you're going to get a lunch for 325 anywhere. And this is very reasonable, yeah. So anyway, with that, I ask the board to approve that recommendation.
Out of curiosity, what do we charge staff members if they're purchasing lunch? I know, I know it's not under the lunch program.
I do, it is, it is a little higher, it might be 370. I, there is, there is a rate for that and I'll have to get back to you.
It's, it's no problem, I, I know that that's.
It's, it's no problem. I, I know that that price does have to be different, and I could believe the serving portions are a little bit healthier.
Yes.
Robust, uh, yes.
It is a little bigger, um, and it is a little more. Um, I just don't know enough, and I think it's three seventy-five.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, right.
I wasn't trying to stump you.
No, no.
I, I do know it has to be different.
I was ready for that one.
Right, okay, and any questions related to it? Anybody have any concerns related to? I mean, I just quickly, I mean, we, we do know, even at that rate, we cover our costs, uh, on our
Yeah.
food service, so we're, we're okay that way, um, from that standpoint. So it's just shy of five percent, um, it's in line with, you know, it has to be ten, so I'm good with that, everybody else? Okay, so, no further discussion, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the National School Lunch Rate Increase from three-ten to three-twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy. Can you roll call?
Mr. Bitman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion passes fifteen point six point five, Renew America's School Grant Award, Mr. Altmaier.
Okay, this is, uh, this is good news, but, but certainly, uh, maybe something we can talk through. Uh, during the month, the district was notified, uh, that we are potential award winners, and I'll explain why I say potential award winners, for the recipients of a Renew America's School Grant Award, okay? Uh, the award, the opportunity is from the Office of State and Community Energy Program, and is called, well, the Renew America's School Grant. Working with twenty school districts, a consortium of districts here in Illinois, headed up by the, uh, superintendent of Williams Field Schools, Tim Farquhar, who also helped us in our efforts to, to receive the four electric buses that we have, um, we all applied for this grant, uh, national, so it's a national, uh, grant. And there was only twenty-four award winners nationwide. Um, our coalition of twenty districts is one of those twenty-four award winners. The majority of the other award winners are just single school districts. Um, and the, the coalition is receiving the second largest award of all twenty-four districts. Um, now, the award is, 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 is a lot better than, well, the BW Award, the Volkswagen Award, because the Volkswagen Award required, uh, a local share of at least twenty-five percent of everything we purchased. This award only requires a five percent local share. So it's been estimated currently of the fourteen point nine million that we've been awarded, between the twenty districts, our share would approximate eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So with a local share, the five percent local share of that eighty-one, would, would approximate forty-five thousand dollars, our contribution, to receive eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars worth of value. Uh, and, and there's flexibility in kind of what we would be doing here to continue to advance our energy program, such as additional solar microgrid, electric buses, and the related infrastructure. The good news is, well, we have the related infrastructure, right? But we could use this for potentially a few more electric buses, for which we would only have to pay five percent of those electric buses. We could use these for, uh, B to G chargers, because we still need additional chargers as part of that infrastructure, and the B to G charger is a different type of charger that, it's called vehicle to grid. It has the ability and the software capability where we can store and sell back energy to ComEd, and that's something we've talked about in the past, and that's a future, that's another future revenue opportunity for the district. Um, and in, in addition, by doing so, and maybe Doug can talk a little bit about this, part of the microgrid concept is being able to, if power were to go out on this campus, and we had battery storage, and currently we have battery storage, well, on all the electric buses we would have, or we would have a microgrid battery storage site, and be something like a trailer or the size of a truck, and that would be a battery storage site. That's, that's like a microgrid. We would have the ability, when the power went out, to utilize that to keep us up and running, to keep our MDF room up and running, to keep anything we needed up and running. But we can also use that microgrid to buy and sell energy, provide back to the grid, which is also another revenue opportunity. Am I getting all this right, though?
Yeah.
No, there you go. So, so that was the intent of this whole grant, um, that was put out by the Office of State and Community Energy Programs, for which we applied. Um, so there is some flexibility in how we utilize those dollars, and that's yet to be determined. I mentioned, we are potential award winners, because once we agree, the twenty school districts, the, the Office of the State and Community Energy Programs are asking those twenty-four districts, are you participating? Number one, because if some of those districts don't participate, my understanding that this fourteen point nine million dollar award may get a little bigger. But within our coalition, if some of those twenty districts say, you know something, we don't have an infrastructure, we don't have solar, we don't have anything, and they decide, you know something, at this point in time, you know, we're gonna step back. We're not ready to pull the trigger. If the size of our coalition decreases, well, then the size of our award would increase, because obviously, we're spreading the fourteen point nine million amongst the larger groups. So it's our recommendation, knowing the future flexibility of these dollars, knowing that we already have an infrastructure in place, knowing that we can possibly get a few more electric buses for, well, five percent of their cost, um, we would, we would like to move forward. So it's our recommendation, but we need the board's approval to continue to move forward, to keep you in tune, uh, with, with what we are doing. Now, once we move forward and negotiation happens with the Office of the State and Community Energy Programs, that is when we will know if we have been fully officially awarded the grant. We have no reason to believe that we wouldn't be, but that's part of the process.
But do we get the opportunity to, to pull out, once we know what the final is?
Well, if we don't spend anything, we don't get anything, so absolutely, there's that flexibility. If we don't want anything, at the end of the day, yeah, this is, this is merely an approval to continue to move forward, so that we can negotiate, like they're calling this process negotiation,
Right.
with the Office of the State and Energy Program Group, to continue to move forward. I think it's actually with the U.S. Department of Energy. So, and we will keep the board apprised throughout this whole thing, but I, I really do, at eight hundred and eighty-one thousand or nine hundred thousand, uh, with an out-of-pocket of forty-five, um, you know, we're not, Mr. Rint Kessick and I, we don't want to build any more infrastructure. Uh, um, we want to get away with only spending the five percent local share here.
Did you say we have to pay forty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So that will be the local share? Forty-five thousand dollars?
No, not upfront.
Okay.
No.
Our share.
I thought we had to get into this.
So, well, like a little bit of a scam.
No.
You got a lot of healthy discussions. If you then owe me forty-five thousand dollars, I promise to give you eight hundred thousand dollars.
No, 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 no. This is, this is, this is much like a lot of the grants that we, a reimbursement-type grant. So to get the eight hundred and eighty-one, we would have to spend the eight hundred and eighty-one plus forty-five thousand dollars. Then we apply for reimbursement, and we'll get the eight eighty-one.
We know that.
Okay.
Yeah, so nothing upfront, but.
Nothing upfront, and.
Well, we, we pay.
They gave us a credit for a million, and we only used half a million.
We're only a five percent. They shouldn't say there's nothing upfront, right? We have to pay for the buses, and then we have to wait for the reimbursement from the federal government.
Or, or you could install a power wall on the existing solar and, and
No, right.
reduce the, uh, the cost of electricity, uh, which would be a benefit, or you could put the power wall on telefax to ComEd and get more revenue.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot of different things we could do here.
A little sensitive to the electric bus.
Hang on, hang on. So, I'm trying to appeal to you right now. So, so with that, we ask, uh, the board for approval. Typically, to continue to move forward, we will keep the board apprised, um, moving forward. Thank you for your support.
Support to the, uh, the, I mean, I think it, given our existing structure and what we've got in place, I definitely think it makes sense to explore, proceed forward and, and explore the options, because I agree, there's, there's all kinds of ways to use.
Yeah.
I know, but Mr. Rint Kessick has presented all kinds of
Yeah.
things and ideas that he had thought about, as far as how you could store and resell and all that type of stuff. So there's, there's, there's ways to either defray costs or generate revenues, I guess.
Yeah, part of the reason we built the EV infrastructure, the size we did, was exactly for these types of opportunities, to receive an electric bus for maybe fifteen thousand dollars. Say enough of that. Um, so with that, I think.
Good answer.
Thank you.
Okay, is there, it, so anybody have any questions on this?
Oh, what's the downside of not going ahead with this?
Downside, you're, you're losing opportunity to potentially have access to things, goods and services slash in, in that field that might defray future cost pressures.
So is this saying we're spending that eight hundred thousand regardless? I'm sorry.
No, no, I think that, no, I think that's, that's what I was asking, is, no, you're, I, I mean, we can get into it and even not do it ultimately, I mean.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's just getting into it and ultimately coming to an agreement with them is gonna give us the opportunity, access it. I think the way it's gonna be written, or the way I hope it'll be written, is that if we, that we have the option, if we, say it does go up to a million, because not everybody's participating, we can choose at whatever level, up to a million, and we're not committed beyond that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think being positive outweighs the negatives at this point. Um, you know, certainly, we're hoping that we'll, we'll be able to use the, the funds for a few more electric buses, and every electric bus, if we can get an electric bus at the five percent cost, um, just, even if we use it, if we use it for the B to G capability, that's gonna pay for itself just in a few years, but the fuel saving, um, and everything else, knowing we already have the infrastructure, will be set up.
Right.
Um, there's gonna be revenue saving, significant fuel savings, no diesel fuel coming, you know, out of our tanks anymore. Uh, the energy cost is costing us nothing. Um, we're gonna be able to operate those electric buses for almost nothing, because we already have the infrastructure.
So, so operations?
And that, or that was the hope.
So, so the operations cost is almost nothing on an electric bus, the purchase price is five percent.
Right.
Where's the downside here? So, and, or, or an opportunity to generate more electricity and sell it back to the grid?
And the maintenance costs.
Yeah.
And the maintenance, yeah.
Yeah, maintenance on those are.
But, yeah, there's, there's no downside here.
Can we use the money to recruit bus drivers that we don't have? Could he still offer us? I'm gonna be a part of it right now, since I'm hired, but, you know, huh.
I bring it up in negotiations.
So, good, very good. Um, okay, if there's no further questions or comments, um, I'll make a motion, um, to approve the continued participation in the Renew America's School Grant Polish. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Troy. Can you roll call?
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bitman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Uh, yes.
Okay, motion passes, um, second to the last, I don't know, thirty-one to say. So we gotta go back up there. Actually, so fifteen point six point six, is our tentative draft of the fiscal year twenty-four budget, um, dang, a five-year.
But, you know, I liked all those previous yes votes. We had a lot of yes votes in a row for a lot of agenda there.
Hmm.
So we're bringing this back to the table. We talked about this. Uh, well, I can't, you know, we're bringing this back, this is gonna be, this is gonna be a good discussion, but I'm gonna hand it off to the board for discussion, because this tentative draft only changed in, in, in four different ways from, from the previous draft. The first tentative draft that I shared at the June board meeting, that draft reflected a decrease in the levy percentage increase for the twenty twenty-three levy from five percent to three percent, really in an effort to outline the impact on local funding over the five-year planning period, and to create a discussion amongst the board about that. Um, this draft, I, I changed, you know, there's only a few drafts left in the budget. This draft of the budget range takes that high percentage assumption for the twenty twenty-three levy, um, and it does recommend, it does, uh, represent administration's recommendation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, uh, tentative budget. Um, this draft also had some material changes, um, that impact the overall operating surplus. So, uh, Ms. Lombard talked about the targeting the digital divide grant, so we're utilizing those funds, and that's great news. So when we were notified of that, and I think I mentioned this, no, I mentioned this in a different meeting, we were notified that we were awarded four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, but we had to spend it by September thirtieth of twenty-three. That's pretty quick, that's right around the corner. Um, and we already had Chromebooks and things of that nature being ordered, so we're utilizing those funds for the Chromebooks for an expense that is already included within the budget, so that's four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar favorable line item. Thank you very much for those extra dollars. We also included the adjustment, uh, we had talked about at that last board meeting, what is some of the administration net salary savings by some of the administrative district office positions that we were kind of moving around or not currently filling, which represents a savings of approximately two hundred and four thousand dollars. So that's a positive or a favorable addition to the budget as well. Then we have one unfavorable, uh, budget item, and that's CPPRT. The CPPRT, Corporate Personal Property Replacement Act, historically has always been about five hundred thousand dollars. And a few years ago, uh, uh, the state changed a lot of loopholes for corporate taxes, and CPPRT going to corporations tripled, I mean tripled, so our five hundred thousand went upwards of one to one point five million dollars. And last year, and nobody could believe it, right, school districts were like, like, we weren't getting good answers from the state of Illinois. They couldn't really articulate why exactly our CPPRT had tripled. So a lot of school districts, instead of budgeting the recommended one point five million, the three times, they budgeted seventy-five percent of the CPPRT, which is what we did. So last year, we budgeted one point one million dollars in CPPRT, and it looks like we're gonna get about one point three to one point four maybe. We might, I'm waiting for the final payment to come in to see what, exactly what that is. Now the state came around and they said, ooh, the Department of Revenue, so I did a little digging on this, the Department of Revenue came back and they said, ooh, we made a mistake. So when they changed all those loopholes and all those dollars were being provided back to corporations, well, part of those dollars were being provided back to corporations, the other part of those dollars were being provided back to the state of Illinois, and the reallocation percentages that they were using, well, were wrong. They weren't giving enough back to the state. Of course, they weren't giving enough back to the state. So now they're saying, hey, for next year, we need to lower those, because, well, they've been wrong. Reallocation percentages were wrong. So they said that we're gonna knock it down by thirty-three percent over the next several years until they right-size this. They're not gonna take all the money away right away, but they're gonna reduce the payout thirty-three percent. By reducing the payout thirty-three percent, that brings our CPPRT that we should receive next year down to one point oh six nine million. It currently is at one point one three seven million, so it's a hundred and one eighty-one thousand dollar reduction in CPPRT. Um, currently an estimate until they finalize the numbers. Um, but I did want to share that. So the net operating surplus as a result of those positive adjustments is three hundred and seventeen thousand and seventy-nine dollars. So we currently have a balanced budget. On page four of your tentative budget, you'll see an outline of the previous drafts of the budget. So I outlined the first draft that was presented, the tentative draft in purple there that was, uh, presented in June, showing a nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar deficit, and then with the changes currently, we, we're showing a three hundred and seventeen thousand dollar balanced budget. So with that, there's been no other changes since the last presentation of the budget, um, and, and because of the time, I don't really think you want me to go through all the assumptions again. I'd be happy to do so, uh, but I'd like to open it up for discussion, and that's certainly, um, recommendation by administration to move forward with this as the tentative draft of budget for fiscal year twenty-four.
Okay, um, all right. Um, first, I'd like to ask, um, does anybody want to question any, you know, line items, assumptions that they possibly looked in this budget, and, and have any questions concerning that? I mean, that's probably where we should start, to see.
I hadn't noticed this before. The decrease in other local revenue was driven by a one million dollar decrease in the estimate for activity account revenues?
That's the athletic thing. But that, that's on the revenue and expense side. So what happened, two years, excuse me, I just put a mint in my mouth, because I needed one. Um, several years ago, activity accounting is for, for clubs. Several years ago, activity accounting is for, for clubs, student club, student activities, okay? And from an accounting standpoint, from a Gatsby standpoint, there was a new Gatsby path whereby student activity funds needed to be included in the overall district financials. So the auditor, two years ago, made an estimate of approximately two million dollars of revenue being received by the school district in activity club funds and two million dollars of expense. So within the operating budget of the district, it's net zero impact. Because if you look at last year's budget, you would find two million dollars of revenue and two million dollars worth of expense. But then we looked at the numbers this year and we said, well, that two million dollar estimate wasn't a good estimate, it should be more like a million. So that's just simply a change in estimate in numbers that doesn't really impact the operating surplus of the district, the, the overall operating result of the district.
Decreased revenue, decreased expense?
Correct.
Okay. And just earlier, I pointed out the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus, am I misreading that? The FY twenty three budget says two hundred and fifty two thousand four hundred forty nine?
Well, that's the budget.
As a surplus, that's the budget. Okay, so that you're not updating the forecast for that?
No, not yet because we don't have the forecast. And this is a budget document, so we, we generally always show the FY twenty four budget against the FY twenty three budget because we don't have actual, the, and the auditor, and we may not finalize our audit until after we actually pass the budget.
And this is our, ESR funds that'll roll into this, this year as well?
Right, so, so there's a lot of adjustments that still need to come down the pipeline, all the ESR money will increase the revenue here, so in this, if you look at the final, on page four, if you look at the final revenue, it's showing a hundred and twenty five million. But if we have two or three million dollars of rollover, you're going to see a hundred and twenty eight million, but you're also going to see the same increase in the related ESR expenses as well.
Because we got to spend it.
Yeah, because we got to spend it. So when I built this first draft of the budget, because ESR is so, it's, it's such, it's unusual, right? I didn't want, try to build the first draft of this budget with an estimated rollover and then constantly be massaging that number throughout the course of the year. So in the very first draft of the budget, I took out all ESR dollars from the revenue and expenditure side and we will put them back in once we know the rollover amount.
The administration have an opinion?
I'm sorry, that won't impact the operating surplus.
Does the administration have an opinion on abatement?
On abatement, so abatement is generally something we talk about during the levy process and the levy season, but I think it's a great opportunity to talk about abatement here. So for the rest of the board members, an abatement is, the district, and we call it a debt abatement because it's, it's, it's dollars provided by the district to reduce the overall debt being taxed to the community. So it's a debt abatement. Last year we did a debt abatement of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which approximated almost a one percent, one percent of that five percent levy that we asked for, but extended last year.
So the effective? So the effective rate that was levied was closer to the four percent.
Was it the five percent?
Yeah.
No, no, but, but it, it wasn't the five percent that makes the headlines, that, that got people in a debate.
It wasn't, and the operating fund it did, and then we, we offset it out, there's two components to a tax rate. The operating fund portion, and then you got the bond, you got the bond fund. So we, we reduced the bond rate portion of the overall tax rate, it, it effectively reduced what was a five percent increase down to a three point nine, three point eight percent overall. So certainly a strategy. Opportunities here again, that will be available again when we go to do our levy in December. And I know the previous board had already kind of made, you know, commitment is a strong term, but had discussed that we would most likely do another at least seven hundred and fifty. But seven fifty is a magic number, I mean, it's, it's, it's coming from our unbalanced surplus. And it was, the theory was, if you recall back during COVID, when there was a positive surplus balance because there was certain costs not incurred. In those years, we gave some back in the form of payments to the certified staff. We reduced the registration fees and we made a commitment, we, we passed along some of this to our taxpayers, and that seven fifty was the first component of it. Again, the idea wasn't to do it all at once because, again, what you, you don't want to do with your tax rate is you, you don't want to bob it up and down. You, you want to, you want to smooth it out as much as you possibly can. And so the idea was, we, you knew, based on what was going on at the time, CPI was trending high again, and so we knew there would be another opportunity to offset and smooth out the overall tax increase by doing a second level of abatement. So we, we talked about it further, but that, I, I'm a hundred percent in favor of going that route and I'm not adverse to utilizing more than a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar number if others are on board with that. But that, what I'll state is, that is a better methodology to controlling and mitigating your tax rate using abatements of debt service than trying to contain or reduce potential operating fund tax levies. Because operating fund tax levies, you don't take it, you lose it, and you lose it forever in perpetuity and it's compounded year over year over year. And so that is, in my opinion, not something to mess with. If you wanted to control tax rates, I'm perfectly fine with doing that and it makes a lot of sense, especially in this high CPI environment that we just experienced. I am absolutely on board with doing stuff like that.
And I, I bring that question up because first off, you know, there was some discussion last time, there was the big impasse that was really arguing around something that we won't be deciding until December, January.
Right, December.
And, and I think it's good and I think it's healthy for the community to see that. But the truth here, we're not that far off, if the existing board members were already kind of looking at an abatement of this that is roughly one percent, so down to four percent. I think most of us were looking for a kind of a three percent here, we're really not that far off. Again, I think for just sending the message that we need to control costs, I think the three percent is a better message and that we're going to deliver back, we still have the option to look at abatement and kind of how we handle that in December.
I could support a three percent levy. I would also like to mention though that I, we really need to get costs under control, especially in our costs in terms of, you know, improvements to the infrastructure. I think that that spending is, is out of control and it doesn't benefit kids. I will be hard pressed to approve any kind of spending that doesn't benefit kids directly. If we need a new roof, great, if we need new air conditioning, wonderful, let's, let's take care of that. But new fields and, you know, more electric buses and, and all of this other stuff that doesn't benefit staff and students, I'll be hard pressed to, to, to approve without some, some good discussion. So I'll go back to my original statement, I think we need to look at a three percent.
My question to you is, what's so magical about three percent?
Well, I'd actually like to see two, but I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with, I'm gonna go with.
So support two or three?
Yeah.
Give me, I mean, but, give me a reason, what, what, how, how do you, how do you support two or three percent increase when I've heard, you know, you know, and you've heard from Mr. Aney up here that we have to be more competitive in the field of compensation? And, you know, you're, you're telling me we can only give our teachers two or three percent going forward if we're going with two or three percent increases that you're thinking towards our levy? I, I don't, the, the two don't agree. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty simple math and if you look at it, 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 you're, you're setting the district up for failure in regard to its ability to compensate its certified staff and I would not want to go down that road or inhibit us. Like you said, there are other ways, I don't mind getting a three percent, doing it through.
A net three percent?
Yeah, net three percent. You'd levy your five on, on your operating fund and, and find a way to get, you know, do a one and a half million dollar abatement on, on your debt service to do that. And I, and I don't necessarily have a problem with that. The problem is, you, you got to be real careful with the up and downs, up and downs, because now, even if you start getting too low that way, I mean, I, I'm feeling good about where CPI is, I'm a little better thinking it's more like in the three percent. Hopefully slightly lower for this upcoming year and it won't be a big deal, but you can't get too nutty here, you, you got to keep things a little, you can't do too much in, in the world of extremes on this stuff because you're going to set yourself up to fail. I, I do not disagree with, there's opportunities all the time, but if you, I know you guys are all talking about being data-driven, if you want to look at operating costs, we got all kinds of data concerning how we operate operations and maintenance, how we operate transportation, how we operate food service, how we operate all the other departments. The one that might not, you know, what might be a little higher is, is, you know, specialized because of the amount of purchased services in the last year, it's not always been that way, but that was, that was a rough year. Being unwilling to, you know, our kids use our athletic fields, a lot of them, it's a large population, our students use our athletic fields and say, I, I'm not interested in doing anything in that regard. This is, again, it's all short sighted, it's all, this is all for the benefit of the students and, and just running a district responsibly. I mean, we, we, again, you don't have to, there, there's opportunities probably on the O and M side to, to, you know, help out on the budget, I don't disagree with that. But there are, you know, the costs, you know, we got a lot of buildings and they cost a lot of money and, again, we're not inordinate in the amount of money we spend, especially in the world of looking at our utility costs, right? There's, there's nobody in your data set that you, you get from, from PMA that is anywhere close to the utility cost, so, I mean, we.
And, and if it wasn't for that adjustment and planning and research and data that went into getting to this point, we wouldn't be able to redirect those energy dollars that we'd be sending to comm ed to redeploy it back into the classroom. So my question is, if you want to under levy that significantly and damage the district in perpetuity, where are you cutting? Are you cutting the teachers that you value so much? You, you work for a school district, is, is that the position that you really want to stand on?
Mr. Troy, why so negative? I mean, you're assuming, you're assuming, you're, excuse me, you're assuming that we're going to come away damaging this, we're saying, we believe that as a board, we can come up with a solution that is a win for everyone. And you know what, convince us if we need to come up, but we're going to start at three.
So, so here's, the, the discussion has been, you want to do it on the front end and, and that is a rolling cost in perpetuity, that, that, that's not a complex word, that is a forever in other words.
That's one of those old board assumptions that we need all the capital expenditures.
Well, well, we have two million dollars that we're going to have a shortfall in the medical stuff, and Mr. Altmaier can correct me, but we're, we're looking at a, a medical issue where we have to pay for the costs of this and we're going to have to encumber that. So how are we going to do that? Which staff member are you going to cut? Mr. Aney will love that discussion and there's negotiations that are coming up. So there, there are things that need to be addressed and you, you shortfall the revenue, it, it doesn't come out of the savings account because ultimately that's going to hurt the district in the long run too.
I, 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 again, I'll keep it very civil here, I, I understand the position, okay? I, I don't know that I, I mean, I understand wanting to be, you know, cost effective, we've been doing it for freaking a hundred years, okay? We've, we've been all over this stuff for a long time, you might think we spent a lot, I don't know that you're qualified, quite frankly, to know what, what it takes to operate and, and maintain buildings, I don't, I don't think anyone's are, quite frankly.
Well, sure, but that's what our role is.
Our role, our role is to oversee and determine, it's not to be, we are not experts in building maintenance.
And as we stated though, we have till December to really solidify this thing, right? And so convince us, work with your new board to show us why, we, we've seen it at a thirty thousand foot level, over the next few months, let's get into the details. And you know what, we're not unreasonable people.
No, I know.
Heck, we, we asked on Mr. Troy's semantic request to move things around. We can do it on a bigger level too, but we need the time to really dig into it and we're not going to go start up high and come down low, if you want us to spend more, then walk through the process. Convince me that you understand this.
Why did you approve, Mr. Troy, why did you approve two hundred thousand dollars in stuffed animals last year?
In what?
Stuffed animals.
Stuffed animals. That was all part of social emotional learning. No, 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 you interrupted me, you asked me a question, you asked me to answer the question and then you interrupt my answering your question. It had to do with social emotional learning, now if you don't support that, then put that on the table too and say, look, I don't support the spending for social emotional learning and I think we should make cutbacks on that. And we can have that discussion with the people also. Be realistic in what you want to take off the table and don't tell me I'm not going to take, I don't need the revenue because we're spending money on this stuff.
So on the same night that you approved two hundred thousand dollars of stuffed animals for teachers, you cut ours for staff that was in the classroom helping those teachers. And you're saying you have credibility on the cost side, I would argue that you do not. So you can sit here and say, whatever it is, I want the max revenue every time, and you can sit there with your pompous view all you like, but the, the reality is, there is room in this budget to negotiate down and pay teachers. That's the debate we're going to have, that's what happened, so let's have the discussion.
My point, my point is that the money needs to go to the teachers, it needs to go for the students' education. And if we need to go to five percent and you can show me that that money is going to go where it needs to go, for teacher salaries, for staff salaries, for student learning, student programs? And not for all just buildings and grounds, then I'm, I'm up for that discussion.
And I'm on board with that, I'm a hundred percent on board with that and I, I, and, and, I mean, just, you know, the, I mean, we, again, we have data, we've showed the CHA that's been negotiating. We, we spend about the highest percentage of our operating budget on our certified staff than almost any other district.
But we're bleeding them.
Okay, I mean, we, we, I don't know what other data I can give you to say proportionately we're spending, and I'm not saying to spend less on them, I'm saying absolutely, spend more on them, a hundred percent. And I, I, I don't disagree at all if you're saying, here, I'd be willing to look at a five percent, but you got to show me you're spending it towards the classroom and improving students, there's no debate there, a hundred percent.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm, I'm on board.
Absolutely.
And I'm not saying that there isn't items that can't be looked at harder, I'm not, I'm not saying the district is a hundred percent perfect. But I know looking at metrics that I can verify, okay, and they're external and they're with other districts, I can tell you, we're, you know, we're in a, in a pretty good relevant range of where we're at. I mean, I know where we're at, operating cost per student, I know it's been rising, okay, and there's, there's things that have occurred and that have been beneficial to our district. Lower class sizes over a protracted period of time have, have occurred, okay, as a result of that, and that's why the operating spend for students has gone up, there's other opportunities we've provided our students. So I'm, I'm a hundred percent on board with continuing on that and, and yes, it, it, the other types of stuff that don't necessarily benefit the classroom, yeah, they can absolutely come down and, and there's, there are all kinds of things that, that probably should continue to be looked at. I have zero wish with, with the attitude of, here, we, we need to relook at stuff and retune some of this stuff. But I would not take away the operating fund revenue that you can never get back because you're going to take away the ability to pay and, and what I absolutely positively do not, I cannot, I mean, I have to tolerate it if you get to go the other way. I am not a deficit spender, I'm not the federal government, we, we, you know, our, our expenses have to match our revenue. Once you start going down a, a, a road of spending more money than you're taking in, you're, you're on a bad path and I do not want to go down that path, so.
And I get that, I'm a reasonable person, so please don't, Mr. Troy, say that, you know, I, I'm doing what, what I'm thinking of doing.
Please don't paint me as unreasonable then.
I'm not, I'm not, but, but you, you saying that, you know, if I go for a three percent levy that, you know, I'm going to hurt the district in perpetuity and I want to cut staff, that's not. gonna hurt the district in perpetuity, and I wanna cut staff, that's not the goal. The goal is to enhance.
But, but that's the byproduct of it, because if you were paying the teachers a high-
It's essential.
Yes, it is potential. But, but it's, you, you are, this school district is in a business where it operates eighty percent on labor. You can't escape that. So you can cut all the, all the facility stuff that you want, but it's not going to take enough money to fill the eighty percent that you're trying to fill. You can go to zero, and you're not gonna get there. So you've gotta make adjustments in all of this stuff, and there has to be a balance in order to get there. And adjusting the revenue on the front end of this because you want to, it just doesn't make sense.
So technically-
The data is in the numbers, and I'm sorry that the numbers disagree with your philosophy, but it's, it's right there in front of you.
All right, I think, let's go ahead and make the motion, move this forward. I don't think we're gonna have any a lot of debate here. We're debating about something that really is decided in December.
Right.
And I appreciate the passion. We just need to move forward. We can have this argument, and we will have this argument more.
Right. So, so, but my question is, I'm a hundred percent, you know, let's go forward with something here. But, you know, I'll make a motion. I don't wanna get into what we did the last time. I mean, like you said, I, my fundamental, I don't, so if you guys are ultimately gonna get it to a point where you're, you're just, you want to reduce the budgeted revenue by one or two percent, and it's gonna create an operating deficit in the budget for moving forward, I'm not on board with that. I mean, again, you guys can outvote me on it, but if that's where this is going with motions, I don't, I don't wanna go there. Rather, before I start making motions, rather, where are we at?
Yeah, and you guys, like, just, I mean, I think everybody, I feel like we're all saying kind of the same thing, but taking it at different points of it. So I guess my question to you is, if we took the five percent upfront and have the thought process of looking to get to where that three percent is, because there is a lot of unknowns still coming this year, and we can work together to work on what those O and M updates are, or what changes to where we can save money, I think that's a better approach, rather than just taking it right off the top in the beginning.
Well-
And I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with-
That's kinda how I always look at it.
Because we're not voting on it to put it in stone, I'm, I'm fine with that, so that we continue, and we look at numbers, and I'm sure-
You're not, you're not bound by, if you go, say you go forward with this budget, you're not, it is represented by, yes, a five percent increase in a future levy to be passed in December, but you're still not bound by it. I mean, it's just, it's kind of where we're going, and you'll see how it shakes out, and you might see operating expenses come down, or whatever, on the final budget, or whatever, and it, it might change the whole overall view.
So why not start with our point of three percent? And if we need to go up, and you, and we all can justify that, then so be it, too.
Well, the reason would be because you'll be putting out a deficit budget. I'm that.
Well, I thought the budget isn't gonna be put out till December.
Oh, no, the budget will be-
The final, but the finalized-
But this, this initial budget that's out there is kind of the model to go forward through and finally get out. This is what's gonna, as far as what's gonna be on display.
Uh, yeah, so the board will see another more detailed draft at the August board meeting, so probably a month from now. And then obviously, the final in September, at the September COW, there might be another one. So there's still a few more opportunities to see the adjustments along the way. So whatever-
Right, I'm still trying to figure out why we have to pass a motion on it right now. Just part of the process that each district has to pass a budget.
So one of the other things-
Right now? I don't think there's any police that's gonna really-
I'm a policy, go ahead.
So one of the, one of the things that I'm curious about is, is this reduction, whether it's the two percent or three percent, or whatever the number turns out to be, is what is the impact to the homeowner based on the value of their home?
One percent, forty-five bucks. On a three hundred, three hundred thousand dollar home, one hundred thousand dollars-
So it's a couple pieces.
It'd be forty-five bucks for the year. Ninety bucks on the two percent is what it equates to. So, so that's what you're potentially saving. And again, we can save, we can save the exact same dollars, but that, you're still taking the five percent on the operating and just doing it through a big-
And making it a deeper abatement, yes.
But, so they, I think they understand that, that, yeah, it's fine.
So, and each percentage right now for the FY twenty-four budget that you're looking at is about four hundred thousand, so it's an eight hundred thousand dollar swing. So looking at the current tentative budget surplus, as noted on page four, of three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, that number would turn to a deficit of four seventy-seven if I were to change it to three percent.
You were to reduce revenue by, with the assumption that only three percent was gonna be levied on the operating fund increase, if that would be the case.
Right. And to Mr. Craddy's point, there's gonna be a lot more adjustments coming down the pipeline. It's not just the extra rollovers. There's a lot of other things that we're still gonna look at. You know, I'm continuing to meet with special ed, you know, all the time, and so, you know, I may have to increase the contracted services line item, right? If we're under contract on a few of these things, I will tell you, the current budget is probably not enough to cover that. But there might be some capable things that come down the pipeline as well, right? Uh, once I, once we finalize the, or we receive the final EVO numbers, you know, if that's a hundred thousand dollars more straight, a hundred thousand dollars more, we won't know until we really finalize this. And over the next month, you will see at the August board meeting, a lot more adjustments going through this tentative draft.
So earlier tonight, we spent probably a good thirty minutes, forty minutes discussing the change to power school, but I think all of us are probably in favor of it, but we're just asking them to look at the pricing a little bit, because we want our suppliers to cut back on their, what they're going after. Can I request the cabinet to look for point three percent of savings on a hundred and twenty-five million dollar budget? That would erase the deficit that you're talking about. Point four percent, excuse me.
Well, we can ask the teachers to save less money, yeah.
Yeah, the teachers are under contract.
Yeah, and I was just saying, it's, you just heard, Mr. Troy described, oh, this is a labor-oriented operation, and so you can, so when you say that, you're, it's a much smaller part of your budget, and then there's a presumption that these kids aren't doing their job and already not doing it. And I think they have proven track record of looking at stuff and squeezing it pretty hard. I know Mr. Frank Cusick is a pain in the ass to deal with, with under, I know that for a fact, he beats the crap out of these people. Um, so, am I wrong?
No.
No, I think that's a hundred percent true.
With a smile.
I mean-
I was just told we get our money's worth.
They keep asking me when you're doing a job. And I'm just saying, I know you're saying, and it's okay, it's okay to push and tweak and whatever, and request that, and there's nothing wrong with that, but I'm, and I'm not saying there isn't any, any squeezing to be doing, that's also be squeezing here, but I'm just saying, these guys, they do their job pretty well, and they, they-
It's less than a penny.
Yeah.
It's less than a penny.
Okay. All right, well, let me, let me ask you then, since this is, again, just a, I mean, why don't, why don't we pass it as it is, and we can revisit it again, you know, I guess, and get more updated operating numbers, and see if there's a way to, you know, if there is a way to work this thing down. I mean, I guess, I'm not, I'm not adverse if there's items that we feel are not, you know, as needed, and there's a way to save, that's fine, but I, again, I just, I'm very mindful of understanding how money works out into the future. I'm not looking at today, I'm looking at the next three to five years, and how that affects this, and how it affects our obligations and our contracts with our two employment unions, and how to service, and make sure that we are staying competitive. Because what we do, the fact is, what we do know is, our tax rate compared to everybody pretty much else, the county, we're the second lowest tax rate in the county, in spite of having a higher probably debt service than almost all these other places, because of our buildings, and then our bond repaying on our buildings. So I'm, that's the part I'm struggling, is I know, I know you wanna be taxpayer-friendly, but I, I think the district is taxpayer-friendly. And the last thing I'm gonna advocate on is, what you don't wanna do is put this district in a downward spiral. I know that's a hundred percent not what you're looking to do, okay? But if I, you know, you start moving it, that needle in that direction, we all have own values here that we don't wanna see, that are voided by our school district and the opportunities our kids have, and by the quality of teachers we have, all of that stuff is probably giving us a certain level of value that is well beyond the forty-five or ninety dollars a year that we could be possibly saving people by trying to reduce it, you know, levy, operating levy reduction, when, like I said, we can accomplish the same thing through, so, that's-
Yeah, I mean, that, that's my biggest fear is, you know, with eighty percent of the buildings and staff being the bulk of your budget, you can start to carve out things like, you know, you've mentioned, but once you get to that deficit, the only way to go to get out of the deficit is go after the bigger dollars, which start to go into the teachers, into the buildings, and I, I just, that scares me. But I, I do think, you know, doing this as the five, and then talking this through as things come in, we're gonna have a better picture of this. It's pretty blurry right now.
One other thing, Mr. Altmaier, our debt that we have remaining, I know we've spent a lot of time servicing the debt and making it a lot more friendly to the, to the school district, when does that debt cycle down even further?
Let a year twenty-five.
Yeah.
We've had twenty-six.
It's a little, yeah.
But if there's a, if there's a time to do this kind of, you know, a real reduction, is when that debt wall collapses or takes a step back, because you don't have to necessarily service the debt that goes away now. So you, you have more dollars available to spend in the places that need to be addressed.
Again, the debt service is gonna get, that's regardless of what incentive to the DAP and stuff like that, but I'm, it's, it will allow us-
Money to tax pay.
Correct. Money to tax pay, and it's already gonna be going down. That's what I'm saying. I know, I know there's a little bit of relief two years away here in regards to our debt repayment structure. So I know there's that, that's going on, and that's why doing the debt abatement for the next year, two years possibly, continues to smooth out the tax rate and with that bonds, and kind of make it work where it's a very, you know, the impact to our local taxpayers is pretty, you know, not too bad. And again, it's, we've operated, you gotta remember this, we've operated for fifteen years prior to these last two years on one and a half to two and a half percent increases in our CPI, local property-
The point one percent.
Yeah, so there was a point one, and there was a four point one. Other than that, everything's been basically between one and a half, two and a half percent on average, a little over two percent. So it, it, it hasn't, I mean, been paying taxes here twenty-five years. It's not great, we're all, we all like paying taxes, but it's not been horrific, and by any stretch of the imagination, so.
And we've still managed to give kids solid opportunities for the next stage in their lives. There's numerous stories of kids that have succeeded in the next world, whether it's college or career, whatever their next career's-
They're not looking to take away that stuff. They're, they're on board with all that stuff.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's the point, right? I think the problem with this board right now, and we're gonna have a get-together to get to know each other a little bit more, is you don't trust that we actually want the best for the kids, and that's a problem with me. Because you don't take me seriously, because in your head, you can't get over the idea that someone else has a different idea and a different approach to something. And we all need to be open-minded here, and that's what it's about. So you're saying, Sean's saying five percent, you're saying five percent, let's work it out and bring the budget down in line, maybe get to that three percent. I'm saying, let's set the bar. Cabinet team, let's scrutinize every single dollar we spend. So when we're doing something like that, let's be smart about it and bring it in line in that three percent. It's just a different way to approach it, it's something we do in business all the time. And I just, again, Mr. Troy, we're gonna have to work something out here, because you just don't trust us, and that's not fair, because we're all here for the mission of the kids. We're all here for that, and I believe you are, too. But you need to start respecting everybody else first.
I disagree with you, and I resent the implications that you are asserting.
Who's that one? There's an orange frog somewhere for you. I have some hanging on my wall.
I'm sure you do.
Mr. President, can we call the questions, please?
Yeah, well, questions, I'll make a motion.
Can we make a motion, please?
Um, so I'll make the motion to approve the budget, fiscal year twenty-four budget as presented by the administration. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bitman?
No.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
No.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes, and again, we respect the fact that you guys, and we'll talk further, and we'll get it figured out together. So I appreciate the effort on that. Again, it's hard, because we do have to talk through it, and we have to, I agree, we gotta trust each other a little bit more, and I, I, I do firmly believe that, yeah, that all four of you have gone out for the right reasons, and you're just going about looking at things slightly different, and that's, that's okay. There's not a problem with that.
Yeah, I appreciate, you've been wonderful before I was on the board and after on the board. I have no issues with you as well.
Okay, so then you have the next item, which would be-
The next item is, the board discussion for future agenda items. Does anybody have any agenda items they'd like to bring up for future discussion?
All right, looks like the, you know, I mean, and I don't know how equal this is previous, but I think that necessarily has to be at the next meeting, but I think in the world in the paint of what you're talking about, I would, we should do an audit of our purchased services, and just kind of get a feel, and again, I know we're spending a lot of money, most of it, a lot of times, on special ed, but just in, just so that everybody, you know, administration, too, you've got a few newer team members and stuff, and so just maybe do a little bit of an audit on that to take a look at it. If this, I'm thinking that, you know, if there's gonna be dollars, it's gonna be the higher ticket items that you can generate potential, more likely to find savings.
Was that contract services, or was that special services?
It's contract services, and I know quite a lot of it related to special ed, but there's others, there's others that aren't, yeah. And just, just, again, taking a look at that, and it just, you know, all those, you know, it's like looking at your credit card, looking at all the recurring charges.
We can maybe, we can maybe do a multi-phase type of approach with the board.
I'm not looking forward to it.
No, no, where we show, you know, big picture, this is what purchase service, right? Because there's various line items on the budget here, right? And even in the executive summary report called purchase services and supplies and materials, but not everybody knows what all the big-ticket items are in each one of those buckets, unless you're literally flipping through every single page in that of the attachment. So we'll, we'll provide a summary of all that information, and then we'll, we'll devise a plan, if you will, on how to approach that. We, we're already working on things for the strategic plan moving forward. It's going to address some of this, and that, we talked about it yesterday.
Yep.
So, I appreciate that. So we are working on the point three percent, by the way.
Thanks, you're welcome. All right, with that, unless there's any other agenda items, thank you, Mr. Altmaier. All right, we will move on, and we are gonna move back into a closed session at ten forty-eight PM. And hopefully we'll be out of there by eleven, and do we need to roll? Will someone check on the motion to move into closed session?
Check.
All right. That'll roll call me.
Mr. Bitman?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Crady?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yep.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
We're going to exit out of closed session at 11:33 PM. Second, I will do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Move back into session and I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn at 11:33 PM.